All right, it's six o'clock, everybody. So we are gonna start tonight's Select Board meeting and Board of Public Works meeting. We are in the first floor of the Rutland Library. We are also on Zoom for the public's ability to see. Why don't we start off with the national, I mean, not national. Who's kicking it on? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, our chair is stuck in traffic right now, so should be coming in hot, a little bit late. So let's move ahead. We had scheduled an executive session. Do you want to skip over that or you want to go right into that?
Yeah, I mean, it was scheduled first. I think the board reviewed it at your last meeting and executive session, so I think it should be brief.
All right, so it'll be an executive session for reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for litigation. If an open meeting may have determined what is detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. Subject: Collective Bargaining Agreement IAFF Local 4878 Firefighters Union. Number one, to ratify collective bargaining agreement IAFF Local 4878 Firefighters Union. To return to open session.
Second. Do you have a motion?
Second? Yeah, second. Roll call, Harry.
Second, aye.
Aye, aye.
Ledger, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Want me to close the doors? I'm walking.
On giving that either to Chris or to John, so he can communicate it to the town administrator and. Select board. And that's my struggle right now is it doesn't seem like the communication is coming from their project management, which they have one. Into the town. And I think that would 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 help people make decisions and also. You know, instead of Friday, what was it Friday before or Thursday before our long weekend? All of a sudden, hey, we need another two weeks. So tha- that's just frustrating from my perspective.
I agree with John with the rain. If we had had two weeks of rain, God knows what would happen. I mean.
I mean, last year it rained every every weekend from from July through November.
No, you're right. Yeah.
Yeah, that was just my comment.
Mr. Miller, if Molton Road was open, would you use it?
I I know multiple people who would use it, absolutely.
Only because it's. It's not a great road.
Well, I understand, but half my neighborhood is Teachers at Central Tree. And so you're talking about taking their three minute commute to work, which which we are, by the way, we already extended because. You can't go in the front lane anymore. You have to go out, go all the way around. We've already extended that commute and now we've added another thirteen minutes in the morning. Yeah, I I there are people who absolutely would use that Molton Mill if it was open.
So if I can take that question a little bit further. If that road, which isn't the greatest, because you can't get two cars down that road.
Can't do it on Sassoon either.
But if it was a one way for you to use, which way would you want the one way?
Uh, going up the hill.
And it was in the morning, going to work?
Yeah, the 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 drive up the hill, I think, is is a bit because people are trying to get places. You can always you can always afford a few more minutes coming home most days. It's the it's the getting places that is a mess.
Yeah, I I mean, I don't know if that's possible. I was just kinda asking you for your thoughts on that.
So I think Austin, if you can, what I'm hearing is just if there's any work with DOT with Mast dot and the project. Managers to just have more forward thinking and honest conversation about it. We, I think, all understand. That there's unexpected and unforeseen circumstances that arise on. Also to John's point, and I think we all feel that where in Rutland, there's ledge. We know that. Um, so some of it is also that. That level of frustration also. So if there's anything that kind of we as a town can do on the Mast dot side, just to. Alert the residents with more fore- forewarning if things change or or whatever. Um, you know, I kind of had said, I wish they almost had said it would be closed until the end of the year and then pushed back and surprised it's open. Versus uh. Unattainable deadline, so.
I have a nephew and a personal friend that live down in the development down there. And they have echoed your sentiments to me as well. So in other words, you know, yes, they're feeling the same amount of frustration you are. So, okay. So it's one of these things that. We we've done what we could do to get to. To get the thing on on the road and now it's on the road and the road has gotten longer and longer and, you know. I I share your frustration because they're sharing their frustrations with me.
Just a few comments, Madam Chair. Um, I definitely appreciate the sentiment. I appreciate um folks. Whether it's through social media, email, any communications, giving feedback. Um, believe it or not, this dam construction um started earlier than it was slated to. It was actually supposed to start in November. Um, and was supposed to take seven months to complete. Um, so even with the accelerated, um. Well, delayed accelerated schedule, we're still ahead of schedule for dam construction.
Can I just pause you for a second?
No, just one sec. I'll finish. The paving of fifty-six will also be ahead of schedule. Um, Mast DOT has communicated that they will pave, uh, do the final paving before it was slated to be done in the spring. So. Um, but I appreciate and unfortunately, so we did, they did plan for ledge, just not that amount of ledge, right? So. There's some things that did happen once they dug that really massive hole that you saw those pictures of. Um, projects aren't easy, especially infrastructure projects are not easy. Um, and I think all the comments that were mentioned about some of the um challenges that we have here in Rutland further. Um, I think demonstrated that projects like this are not easy, so. Um, but again, I appreciate the sentiment and the feedback. And of course, next time we have a. Seven million dollar project funded by someone, we'll try to be a little bit more proactive um to make sure that folks are aware.
So, I mean, we've asked, we can ask for a little bit more push from on the DOT side for just communication and updates. And know going forward that. Again, use this as a learning curve or a learning experience opportunity, but I think also. It's when it's state-funded federally funded projects, we're also a little bit at the mercy of of those entities as well. And so.
So not to beat the dead horse, but um. Austin's words just there. First time in these meetings that it's been seven, been anything's been said seven months. First time it's ever been said that it was supposed to start in November. I mean, this is this is the communication problem. If this is truly a seven month project, why in June was it two weeks? Why in September was it three weeks? And now it's two months when it was really seven months? This is a communication problem.
I can answer that. So the whole project was well ahead of schedule, even with the extremely, it was. Um, even with the extremely rainy summer of last year, believe it or not, all the work that was done that you saw accomplished last year. Was still made the project ahead of schedule. The utility relocation alone was supposed to take months. Um, I think it took a month and a half because of, I think, and I'll give Mast dot and the contractor a lot of credit. They stayed on top of the utility companies. And then with this bridge project, uh, or this culvert repair project. There was an initial design, it was approved, signed off by all the entities and the powers that be from from the past. And then final review from Office of Dam Safety delayed it. So the initial two week um process. Um, or or timeline that was mentioned to the board and to the community. Um, then was rejected quite literally two days before the projected start by Office of Dam Safety. So that led to further delay. So. Um, unfortunately, you know, stuff like this happens. Um, but I would also push back. Obviously, I don't think none of us were here or on the board. Um, when this project was talked about over the past however many years, but. Um, I mean, there has been design hearings, there's been um notifications that have sent out about the community. Probably the internal schedule, you're right, was not published. Um, that I think all of us are familiar with with those Gantt charts, that was not published. Um, but regardless if it was seven months, five months, when we were told by structural engineers, Office of Dam Safety, other state agencies, that it would take a certain timeframe. I think all of us. Rely on their expertise to tell us what happens and give us updates. So we meet weekly, bi-weekly to talk about the project, how things are going. There's been parts about the culvert replacement that's been going very well. There's there's other parts that have. Um, and as soon as we know information about what's going on, obviously, I haven't been here for a couple of weeks, but I. You know, was still aware that the town communicated updates, whether it's through photos or different timelines, so. Um, and that's been relayed through our social media communications as well as on um the website and other venues as well. By by all means, I don't wanna say that the project's been perfect, but I think it's still going fairly well. Um, for the community, um, given that we're not actively managing this project.
Yeah, the other consideration I I would say is I think we um. This, the board and the the offices have been trying to be more proactive with communicating out information. Is it perfect? By no means. But are we better than we were even two or three years ago? I think we are a lot better. We're utilizing social media a lot more reliably. We're utilizing the website a lot more reliably. Um, trying to get more information on the town town sign and everything. So by no means is it perfect. Um, and. We st- we, I think we all have opportunities for growth, for sure, but I don't wanna dismiss the the amount of work that that. Our office has been, that I think they've been doing. Again, I'm not saying it's perfect, and I think that we can. Work to do better, but given the the staffing limitations and the time constraints. Um, and everything also, I think that that we're making. Progress and it's a goal of ours to to look at ways to improve communication. Um, and and hit all residents, because we realize there's a a population of residents that aren't on social media, that aren't online to go to the websites. To get the email alerts and everything also, so. I I under, I appreciate your frustration. I mean. Unfortunately, I don't know that we have, I mean, to, you know, what Tom and.
For an answer to, I mean, I wasn't looking for anything to change. That's wasn't the goal here.
No, no, but I appreciate your you coming in and voicing your concerns. Like I said, I realize that you're not speaking just. For yourself and and your family, but for the families of all of.
It's frustrating, yeah, it's frustrating. If I may say, uh, the last meeting we talked about it, if we could all, and people watching, go to Rutland, Mohawk and buy something. Like you said, they're they're taking a beating. I feel sorry for them.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else here for public comment?
I got a question. When we get to new business, should I comment then or wait? I I I think it's more, this is my opinion, that I should wait and talk on topic until. And let whatever presentation discussion you guys wanna have before comments, but I'll do whatever the board so desires.
I'm I'm amenable to questions at um the time of discussion. I. Think that this is probably the special act town meeting warrant article.
Correct.
Is that the topic that you have?
Yes, um, it's item E.
Yeah, so if you're amenable to that, if any of your question, I don't, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but if any of your questions or anything are.
Yep.
Discuss them that way. I'm amenable to to that. Anyone else on Zoom or here for public comments? Um, moving on to communications, member comments, announcements and town administrator update. Um, I just wanted to do briefly, um, again, extend my appreciation and um. And I guess appreciation and thanks for their s- support. Despite that, uh, with the Puma-Gustaf Road closure. Um, I know that it's frustrating and not ideal and. Everybody's been, um, you know, kind of working around it and I appreciate that and, um. I think it's it's gonna make for a much better fifty-six. We ha- we'll have a new dam. We don't have to worry about. We didn't have to pay for a two million dollar dam. Um, we didn't have to pay for a majority of the seven million dollar total project.
Yeah, it'll be done eventually.
Yeah, and it's one one bigger project now versus piecewise closures over the course of the next few years. And the dollar amounts to the town. Um, uh, I know we're coming out of back to school and kind of everybody's settled in. Fall sports are in swing. It sounds like everybody's doing well and settled in again. Just be mindful of the half days of school. Kids are around and a lot more present in town, um, as well as the sports and everything. Um, Marshfield has fall ball going on. The ball fields at the middle school and Naquag are busy. Um, the ball fields at the um building on Glenwood are busy as well, so just be mindful of of kids and families in the area. Um, we have a couple of things coming up, I see on the calendar. The events committee is hosting a fall swing dance. Uh, this Saturday, October nineteenth, from six to ten P M at the Rutland Sportsman's Club. Um, it's a ticketed event. Um. The information is on the website and I think we have the forms in our office and I'm not sure if the town clerk's office also. As well, um, you can fill out. I believe it's a ten dollar per ticket fee, which goes towards, um. Funding the concerts on the common for uh next year, the twenty twenty-five concerts on the common. We have a the la- library board of tr- oh, and I think, um, the library. Youth.
Teen Advisory Board.
Teen Advisory Board is host is offering babysitting for the fall swing dance, so if families. Um, want to make it a date night, there is a babysitting option as well. That information is also online. Um, moving into the library board of trustees on uh Saturday night, October nineteenth as well, they're hosting an outdoor movie night, five forty-five. Um, the information for that is also on the website. Um, and I believe we have early voting in person beginning. The nineteenth, I think. Um, that's also Saturday. Saturday is a big day. Um, I believe that starts at nine A M. In the clerks, in town hall.
Basement at town hall.
In the basement of town hall. Thank you, Tamika. Um, and those hours are also posted on the website if you want to early vote in person. Um, I believe the mail in ballot requests have gone out or a big chunk of them have gone out already. Um, and I think the last day to register is.
October twenty-sixth.
Yes, October twenty-sixth. So, um, that's the last day to register to vote or. Um, if you have a change of residency or or any of that. Um, the election day is Tuesday, November fifth. Um, we also have um a special town meeting coming up for Rutland. That's November twenty-first. So just be mindful, um, next week on the twenty-fourth. Um, this board and FinCom will be, um, placing the warrant articles. And uh discuss and that discussion. So just for everyone's kind of knowledge. Um, any other members have comments or announcements? Um, Mr. Administrator.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just wanna start off by thanking uh Fire Chief Nipe. For holding down the fort while I was gone. I can't say I miss Rutland. Um, it was great to take some time off. Um, but I just wanna thank uh Chief Nipe, um, for uh for doing a great job for the past couple of weeks. Uh, just a few updates. Um, the State nine-one-one department has notified. The town that they'll fully fund a scope of work. We had a draft sc- uh study from the Collin Center to. Uh, examine a change in the governance structure for the regional dispatch center. It was estimated to cost the town. Uh, and our member communities approximately twelve thousand dollars. This will be fully paid for by the State nine-one-one department. We've already received a contact from the Collin Center, um, and we'll be having a kickoff, I believe, next week. Uh, to start this process. They'll start by interviewing all the stakeholders from all five towns. Um, and will provide a a comprehensive analysis, um, and research of the best practices. Obviously, we're not the first. Uh, center to examine a change in the governance structure, uh, but this was obviously based off of uh feedback from this board. This is also responsive to your, one of your goals, uh, and to and to one of my, well, I guess tentative goals. Uh, but we just wanna thank the nine-one-one department for their support, um, and we'll uh we'll receive the full report and report back to the board. Uh, once that's done in approximately six months. Uh, moving along on the regional trash discussion, uh, we are moving along. We will have a uh virtual public forum. With uh some of the prospective trash haulers. Uh, the end of this month, it's a virtual meeting at six P M. Uh, with uh sponsored and hosted by Mast D E P. Uh, and participation from town officials from Rutland, Hubbardson and Princeton. Will also ask a representative from the select board and Board of Health of each community to attend. This is, um. More so to just get feedback from the prospective trash haulers. Uh, before we go out to R F P. Um, and go through the procurement process, we wanna make sure that this is a program that makes sense for the prospective haulers. Um, so we wanna get their feedback, incorporate that into the R F P document and then go through the formal procurement process. So. Uh, we've already invited, I think the invitation went out today. Uh, to all of the trash haulers that are licensed in in each of the three communities, um, and look forward to their participation at the end of the month. Uh, one of the vans that was authorized by the town meeting in twenty twenty-four, um, uh, actually was delivered a few weeks ago. To the Public Works Department. This van is scheduled to be used by the Facilities and Grounds Division. Uh, it's not in service yet. They're awaiting um installation of some of the tool supplier racks inside. Um, but if you saw the picture on our social media, it's a pretty nice van, especially comparing to what what they were driving. Um, so I know that they're excited. Again, just wanna thank the voters for their support. Um, last week, very exciting, uh, I participated. Uh, and members of the board also attended, uh, and members of town staff as well, a round table hosted by. Uh, the Executive Office of Economic Development and Department of Agriculture. We hosted Canada's Consul General to New England, Bernadette Jordan. Uh, she was visiting several communities uh in New England, uh, to examine the ties between economic development and agriculture. Believe this was also recorded and will be published, if not already, on our community access. Uh, this was hosted at Lilac Hedge Farm, uh, featured speakers from Lilac Hedge, Jordan Dairy Farm. Members of the area chamber and other stakeholders. So I just wanna um thank Consul General Jordan for visiting Rutland. Um, and just wanna give a shout out to former state senator, new rural for rural affairs director. Uh, Ann Goby for also being a great advocate for Rutland, her former region and Massachusetts in general. Um, just wanna also mention, um, two more things, uh. The Central Tree Times earlier this month published the second uh. Second version, if I, I guess, if you will, for October. That's available online. Um, some good information in there, so just wanna remind folks to subscribe uh to the monthly newsletter. And also. There is a yard waste drop-off at the DBW this weekend, uh, Saturday at the DBW behind the facility from eight A M to one P M. The next event, if you can't make it this Saturday, will be on November second. And happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Austin? Thank you and and Director Mori- Moriarty for the um State nine-one-one, um, work. Because I know that that's a a an area of consideration, ways to kind of expand the facility, but also. Um, the infrastructure as well. And so, um, that's a big step forward. So, thank you. Um, I thought the the um economic development and um Department of Ag. Forum was quite interesting and beneficial, um, and I appreciated having the opportunity to return that. So thank you for. For notifying us, um, as well. Moving into, um, we have the town administrator goals. If you remember a couple of meetings and maybe last meeting. We approved our select board goals and objectives, but we held the um town administrator goals because Austin wasn't in attendance. Um, so we have them here. These were the ones that we had drafted together with Austin over the summer. And kind of in coordination with our um board goals and objectives, but these are also his own standalone, so the success. Or not of the, um, board is not tied directly to his his goals. Um, so we have them here. Um, thank you, Austin and Tamika for kind of collating them because I know we had rough draft notes. Thank you. Um, does the board have any conversation? We have, um, a focus on community and outreach. Um, we have a an overarching kind of departments area. Um, kind of working to build relationships, continue to build relationships with the regional school districts. Um, with staff and department heads, um, continue to try to expand the utilization of. Um. Uh, incorporating facilities reservation and utilizing town building meeting space. Um, creating emergency management plans, um. With in coordination with public safety. I know that this is a big kind of ongoing one. Um, identify and work towards the regional dispatch district or expansion. Um, we have human resources, um, although we currently don't have a human resources position. This, I think, is a big, um, area that at least a couple of us on the board feel strongly about, so, um, continuing that work. Um, the, uh, I think a big piece for all of us is the budget and finance piece. We know we now have. Uh, a finance director to facilitate some of this, but it's still kind of the overarching vision of the administrator. Um, uh, then working with infrastructure and kind of continuing to, um. Identify work, but also move existing, um, projects forward. Um, I think. That's kind of the overall areas for which we had spoken about. Um, does the board have any, um, questions, concerns, considerations, commentary?
Certainly no concerns.
I think there, if anything, my concern is it's quite a.
It's a loss.
Yes, yes. Um, but and I and I think that it touches on a lot of the areas for which we hear are, you know. Um, so if there's nothing, I would entertain a motion to approve. The uh town administrator goals for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as presented. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Roll call, Harry?
Second and I.
That's an I.
What's your I?
Yeah, I'll have an I.
Wait, an I. Thank you. And I think a lot of this work has already kind of been similar to our goals and objectives, has kind of already been in the works. Without them being formalized. Um, so I appreciate Austin, you kind of working on moving these forward without a formal adoption as of until tonight. Thank you. Um, moving in to the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Um, Austin, I appreciate you kind of keeping this on our radar as it's early in the budget season, but also. Um, a a good time to keep the lines of communication open. So, um. I will hand it over to you, um, and then we can offer any commentary. We may have, um, as a board, I think.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and I'll be uh very brief. I recognize that there's a lot on the agenda. I just also just, I. Um, I don't think it's ever a bad thing to start talking about budget early. I recognize that there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, especially the the large, if not, well, the largest component of our budget is still unknown at this point. Um, I just wanna make this top of mind for the board, finance committee, the community, just to be aware of. Uh, where we are and, um, for me and, uh, you know, I guess to. Further work with town staff, get some guidance from the community, um, and select board and finance committee. Um, for, you know, from a budget perspective, where you'd like us to go. So. Um, the model, obviously, this was presented, uh, well, a month ago, actually. Um, there's been not too many updates to the overall model, with exception of one thing. Um, this is not the most up-to-date, but, um, our assessor's office is getting ready to certify new growth. Um, they will be certifying new growth at just over seven hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, we have here six hundred thousand dollars. I was trying to be conservative. Um, certified new growth will be about seven seventeen. Um, so that obviously helps our bottom line a little bit. Um, by around, uh, you know, hundred thousand, give or take. Um, overall, still our net position is what it is. Um, I just wanna just. Mention at the top of mind for folks. So, you know, our overall increase, um. In revenue excluding debt exclusion is only about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So when you're talking about spending thirty million dollars. Um, and our overall revenue increases is, you know, one thirty. Um, it doesn't leave a lot of space for growth. Um, from the expenditure side. Um, you think especially some of our fixed costs alone. Would take up that hundred and thirty-one thousand quickly. Um, the way that our minimum local contribution for what you said regional school district alone has increased over the past, uh, several years. Just last year alone, the minimum local contribution was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So. Um, our ability to provide services at some of the cost structures that we have now. Um, and, you know, especially sixty percent of our budget. Um. Our kind of fixed costs, especially capital formulas from the state, that is the challenge that we have. I, again, I would. Push back on any argument that the town is heavy on staffing or services. Candidly, because we're not. I think every department, if they were to get what they wanted, would get double their staffing. Double their supplies budgets, double their purchase services budgets. We're just not there from a town operating budget perspective. Um, so I just wanna mention that at the high level, this report also just includes the, um. You know, projections for, um, how the tax rate is affected. It includes a five-year history of our local receipts. Just for reference. There's not a lot of space for increasing revenue. Um, aside from the obvious. So, um, I just wanna start from there and. See what the board's feedback is. If you have any comments, questions, just to spark a discussion.
Thank you, Austin. Um, I think I also kind of wanna preface this a little bit by saying I appreciate all the work that you've done. Um, and not only this year, but last year as well. And I think that the the, um. The openness and the earlyness of it and the transparency of it, even though it's not good news, is is admirable and something that we as a town have been. Hiding from ourselves for many, many years, as it's, and I think it's been a disservice. Um, and so I appreciate that. Um, that it's maybe not the news that we all wanna hear or see, but it's also an honest look at where we are. Um, right now and. And this, I believe, does not use utilize any one time revenue, so it doesn't utilize any ARPA um money which is not available any longer, it does not utilize any free cash as well, or any stabilization, or anything. Um, despite our financial policy saying that we usually put in, I forget what the number is of free cash, um a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand into our budget as a revenue source. Um, and so I just wanna be clear that that is also what we're seeing is with no one time revenue sources. Um, and I really have been a little personally, a little bit frustrated by the amount that that it kind of get wep gets weaponized, that this is where we are, this is where we almost always are. Um, and we just never know, or have never really known or wanted to know until it's April and we have to figure it out, March or April, and we have to figure it out. So um the fact that we we know this now and going into it and can begin the conversations, I appreciate that. Um, I don't know if the board has any kind of high level um recommendations or um anything. I think for me, I'm a little bit hesitant to say um, you know, absolutely no new staffing, knowing that we have had conversations and looked at opportunities to regionalize, both with HR and a conservation agent. We know we have stormwater needs, um but maybe uh staffing within a funding mechanism um that's not going to add a significant. We also in our board goals and objectives have looking at a town engineer and pulling some of that out of some of our exist- existing um funding sources um from consulting. And so again, I don't necessarily wanna say a blanket um no new staffing for me personally, but also want to be mindful that we do have to be considerate, not just of this year, but what that but those budget impacts could be in subsequent years as well. Um, sure, Harry?
High level question.
Sure.
Probably very simple, three parts. On the revenue side, being conservative for twenty six, you are expecting that the town will pass a two and a half to give you an additional five hundred and forty six thousand in the budget? Cause it's listed here, so I'm trying to understand why it's here.
I don't know, wait, no, no, sorry, so.
General fund, I see, prep prop.
No, so so the way that this model works is uh the prop two and a half increase is the um allowable two and a half increase based off of the previous year levy, so this isn't an override or uh outside of the levy increase. This is the uh allowable two and a half increase based on the tax levy, whichever community takes. So this is a calculation, so that five forty six is two percent of the twenty one point eight million.
So that really shouldn't, that really shouldn't say prop two and a half then.
Well, no, it is, prop two and a half was a law, so that is the allowable.
Only doing a two percent increase.
Yeah, I could change it to allowable.
No, I'm just saying, cause the way it's listed here, I don't want somebody to misinterpret it and think it is. You're requesting a prop two and a half.
Correct.
That would be an override.
Yeah, yeah, that would be an override. So um so for example, the uh two million that was added for FY twenty four, you could actually put that out as a separate line item. In FY twenty four budget, the current year levy limit of twenty point seven million, that was actually like eighteen million, but it was the two million was added to that, so essentially the uh an override adds to the total final calculation, so. Uh, but everything above that is what is allowable and within um master general law.
Okay. Um, I guess we'll have to get into it, cause I see some pretty hefty increases, ten percent, thirteen percent, ten percent. So I guess we'll have to get into a little detail on that.
Um, well, so actually, can I ask, just ask on that, so your your comments and feedback on that, I I think are great. I'm trying to be conservative on the high side.
Uh, yeah, I know.
Um, and but also you look at some of our, you know, the average over the past, well, I have data all the way back to FY seventeen, I mean, we've been averaging around there, maybe seven, eight percent. So recognizing some of the comments that you hear publicly at the school committee.
Yeah.
Meeting, um, you know, that that this is a tough year for every regional school district, um but especially Wachusett Regional School District, I'm trying to be high to show what that bottom line impact is. So but if you have any suggestions or feedback for a different number there, I'd be happy to hear that and see how that ref reflects in the model.
I haven't really dug into the details yet, you know, I who that's what I do. So I'm just looking at the basics here, the real high level stuff, like Leah said, and.
Can I just give one example, I'm sorry, Harry?
Sure.
So for example, that was a ten percent increase, the bottom line there uh showed two million as the as the net deficit. Let's say this is a great year for Wachusett Regional School District, and our assessment only goes up four percent. Our bottom line net position is still negative eight hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, right? So there's still a revenue issue there, right? Um, that is is really what I'm trying to demonstrate, is that um even if expenditures and budgets were perfect, um, we still have a challenge and just and I know that all five town administrators in the Wachusett district are talking about this, I think we're all in this position, right? We're all starting to get up against our our revenues, prop two and a half, local receipts, we're really budgeting as high as we can. Um, but when sixty percent of your budget goes up, even a small amount, a a small amount on a big number is a big number, especially for our size budget, so. Um, and I can play around with different percentages that you would like to see and send that to you, but um that's just where we are.
So you're looking at really the assessment from Wachusett to go up basically ten percent?
Well, this is just for for planning purposes, right? So I I put up ten, that's what I put just to show worst case scenario.
I know there's a lot of talk about whether the state's gonna wiggle a little bit to give us more money. Okay, I've seen some talk on that, but if they don't, uh that one point seven million increase, that's what we're really looking for from Wachusett, from the best the best estimate that you can give us.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's there's some some factors there that that is also hard to answer right now, right? So a lot of it also depends on enrollment, um total enrollment for the district, for their chapter seventy eight. Obviously, that was one of the challenges last year, is that there was a decrease in enrollment. Um, district was uh in health harness and only received the minimum aid of thirty dollars per pupil at the time of budget preparation. Later on in the budget cycle, the the state legislature and and governor did sign and amended um chapter seventy that that boosted that from thirty dollars per pupil to a hundred and four dollars per pupil. But again, it's after all, cities and towns have passed their budgets, um so that's hard to uh to say. So um we haven't received the official certified enrollment from the Wachusett Regional School District. Um, and also they haven't um uh DESI and um and Department of Revenue haven't come to a consensus on the inflation adjustment as well, which is also a component to the um chapter seventy eight. So, you know, it's it's a little early to say where chapter seventy is going to be. My thought is, especially for all of us, is be conservative, estimate the worst, and plan from there. And anything additional, like what happened last year, um is is good for all of us.
So one more question.
Yep.
So if we, the guesstimate on this for twenty twenty six is that we're gonna be two million dollars over budget, have you thought about how we increase the revenue or how we reduce the expenses? Is that half and half, or is it all of one?
Well, so that's that's also why I'm here, because that that's a that's a it's a big consideration. Um, even splitting half and half, that's a big consideration on both sides. Um, I don't know quickly, um without the obvious, how you raise one million dollars in revenue in one year. Um, I also don't know right now how you um cut just a municipal budget, one million dollars in one year, without devastating impacts um to to the organization. So um, you know, I am looking for some feedback, I have some ideas. Um, I think the five towns are exploring ways to reduce some of our fixed costs, so looking at um health insurance adjustments, buying in bulk, right? All five of us, including the school district, are going out to the market on our own, that doesn't make sense. So we're exploring that and seeing if there's cost savings there, but again, that's not a million dollars in cost savings for us. Um, it could be something. Um, and then I think, you know, we're looking at sharing opportunities, I think we, if everything was perfect, we would share everything, but obviously, that's not reason uh reasonable either, right? So that's why we have to kind of study and examine things and see what makes sense, right? There's been some opportunities that have come before this board to share, and it just didn't work out for whatever reason, whether it didn't work out for us or for the other uh partner, so. Um, but I also, you know, I'm really asking for for some suggestions or thoughts. Even if you think it's a dumb little idea, let's let's explore it um and see if it makes sense. Um, and I'll be asking the same question of uh of the finance committee as well.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just one question, when you say sharing with other communities and stuff, has there been much talk or any talk about regionalizing departments as far as, this is crazy, and a lot of guys aren't, I like that I'm saying this, but regional police or regional fire or?
Um, yeah, so that's exactly kind of what I mean, I mean, so um it's interesting, because especially in New England and and Massachusetts especially, we um we like to have a lot of our own.
Right.
Um, but you look at.
My sheriff departments, like we do with the states.
Yep, um, there's some examples in Western Mass where there's, for example, re uh fire districts. Um, very similar to what we're talking about with the dispatch, right? Is converting it into a district where it's kind of its own operation, quite literally, it's its own like taxing authority. Um, but that's a big question to ask, and you know, I wouldn't wanna put that out there right now saying, yeah, let's do a police or fire district without, again, exploring that a little bit more.
Oh, yeah, it's a long ways off, but.
Um, but I do think that that could be something that we could look at. Um, obviously, when you're part of a district, like with the regional school district or any um district model, you receive an assessment, so there's also the kind of the perceived loss of control there that you get when you don't own the operation or the service. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we've we've talked about that. Um, but you know, ultimately, we gotta just see what also makes sense for Rutland to, you know.
Um, I think if we can, I think, and I'm not sure what directives kind of have gone out to the departments specifically, but I think um, you know, kind of level funded, knowing that we had some turnback and some line items this past year. Um, I I am still, I don't come from a cut, 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 cut mindset, because I think historically, that's what Rutland does, is cut down to the bare bones, and then we spend a year or two trying to rebuild, and then suddenly we're back to cutting again, and it makes a very tumultuous environment for employees, and that's not beneficial to the town for constant staff turnover. Um, it's also been detrimental to a lot of our needs as a community, I think, um for the departments, not able to maintain, um whether it's roads or infrastructure, or buildings, or um equipment or anything like that. So I think that that that's also a a balance, but knowing that there was some turnback this past year from some um to to try to keep it as level funded and have the conversations, you don't prevent the department heads from saying this is a true need. Um, also, because I think we as a board, I know I would like to see what the true needs are, where we are, maybe not even this year, but also in the upcoming years as well, um.
So level, so I just wanna make this clear, so is it, is the recommendation level funded or level service? Um, and I think you could do exactly what kind of what you're mentioning, if you, for example, if it was level funded, you could also say, but if there's uh supplemental funding requests, put that in a separate memo to me or something like that. We could certainly do that, but I but those are two separate.
Yeah.
Um.
And I think for me, better, and I haven't gone down into like the department requests by, I mean, I know that they're still, it's not there yet, right? But um understanding if a level, for me personally, and I want conversation from the board, if a level funded budget is a significant, is a decrease in service or a significant decrease in service, then that conversation, because I do feel like coming out of an override a year, two years ago, that then to suddenly start having s noticeable and significant cuts to service is not something that I personally want. I also wanna be cognizant of what that does to our taxpayers, but that's my whole conversation of that wheel that we tend to be on is here, do everything, then pull back because suddenly the expenses of everything continue to go up and we don't have the revenue, and it's this vicious cycle that we can't get out of our own way. Um, and we're not in, I think that we're still on the cusp. And so I don't wanna level service if it's a significant, I I don't wanna level fund if it's a significant decrease to service, if that makes sense. I don't know, but that's conversation for the whole board, that's my personal um opinion. And I know that's probably a little bit more work for you and the department heads, but again.
This is the fun stuff.
Knowing where we are versus where.
But so i is there consensus though among the board on on that?
I I share the sentiments.
On.
So the concept of uh level, as a part of my budget instructions to town departments, level funded um with the caveat um that if a department needs to advocate for additional funding because of its uh potential impact on service levels, we can have that discussion.
I guess we can have that, I'm still of the belief that we should find a way to make both sides of the equation work. So if we level on one side, that means we don't have to raise taxes on the other side maybe, or raise revenue. So how do we make both sides work that benefits our town services, but also benefits our taxpayers? I guess, I don't know how to do that, I guess I'm leaving that up to you. But I I I don't see critically cutting our stuff and going back to where we were, but we have to do something. I mean, two million of expenses, I, you're right, unless we go for a huge two and a half override, we're not gonna make that up. Unless we have something out there we don't know about, and if Wachusett were to come through with three million, that would help a lot, that would make a big deal. But we don't see that happening, so I have to go with a fifty fifty blend, you know? I'm not happy with either one, but at least we show some concession to our staff and our town for that.
Yeah, one thing I just wanna remind everyone that, uh and I recognize the impact that everyone is feeling, we're all feeling um with the economy, we feel it too, you know, um. Are all of our utilities have increased significantly along with everyone. Um, we do have the opportunity to buy in bulk, but not for a lot, and even still buying in bulk bulk is subject to inflation. Um, so you know, a lot of our cost structures, just by the nature of doing business, keeping the lights on, are also increasing at some of the same rates that everyone uh is increasing. I will give obviously the board and and um town departments a lot of credit um for our collective bargaining agreements, I think they've been very responsible. Um, and I, you know, I really don't think that those increases are are substantial components to our projected increases in the budget. Uh, but again, I think we're um at a point where, you know, to give you reference, last year, our budget increased one point six million dollars. Of the one point six million, educational increases was one point three of that. Um, that's a huge component of our total spend. And um until we figure out a way to properly fund our educational obligations, we're always gonna have this challenge of, you know, how do we split two million on the town side on revenue and expenses? I mean, it's really, there's towns that have not a lot of revenue problems that have a hard time coming up with a million dollars in new revenue. Um, and I know that that was, you know, part of the review for me, uh for my perfor- performance review, was find new revenue sources. But again, I think um, I think some of our uh revenues that are subject to the economy, like uh let's look quickly at the last page, uh licenses, right? So uh board brings in approximate, board brought in ten thousand dollars for alcohol license. That's um the most it's ever been. Um, building permits, we brought a hundred and fifty one thousand dollars in revenue. It's not the highest it's been, but it's still pretty high comparing um previous years. So we're we are, I think, maxing out on our revenue for um, you know, things that are tied to the economy, which is local receipts, but just remember, local receipts is still only, I'm gonna round up and say ten percent of our overall revenue source. We are a heavily reliant property tax community, and more so of those properties. And more so of those property taxes, ninety five percent of that is is residential property tax, so. Um but again, when we talk about, you know, diversifying our property tax income. They say economic development is like a ten year solution. If we had a plan today, it takes about ten years to really realize that from the revenue side, so um. Yeah, I think obviously we've got a lot of long term work to do, but um just again, asking for guidance, so if it is, if there is a consensus on. Um you know, if it's level funded, working with the departments and then as we go through the process, things change, we'll update the board and the community on it. Um but you know, my my goal was to send out the budget instructions this week uh to town departments. Um and to start that process and discussing with everyone.
I appreciate the effort that you put into this, Austin, and I really think that, you know, looking at these figures and looking at your projections and so forth. Um kind of leads you to a point of nail biting, at least as a taxpayer in town, but. Nevertheless, when you look at these things and realize that there's a certain amount of realism involved in it. Okay, so you know, it is what it is and I I see that, you know, you put a fair amount of effort into this and so on. I think your effort should be commended.
So I know, Austin, it's not a whole lot of guidance, um and I think to your point, and the one point three million. Increase on the educational side was a a big bulk of that was Wachusett, but I don't know if the board recalls that our Bay Path. Assessment had gone up very significantly because we had a large increase in students um that goes there. I also just wanna reiterate that, that some of this I think can continue to be advocacy at the state level. To look at how education is funded, especially the regional agreement, because. According to the current funding formula, Rutland is a very, very, very well to do community. And according to their their funding formula, we should be able to afford a lot. Um and so I think some of that is to help offset, Harry, to your point, to look at revenue pieces or offset expenditures. Um I think a big piece could be the regional school to help offset advocacy, to help offset that assessment piece um for us, but.
That has been a big piece, cause if you look at uh one point three million last year. We passed the two and a half, well, basically that two and a half went to offset the education. Well, what's being done to help the education, help us our town? That's the other side of it, and I think the school committee should be working to help the town offset some of that stuff. So if we are facing another big. Operational cost increase from Wachusett, then even if we decide to pass another two and a half. It's not gonna really help the town, cause it's gonna go mostly to education, so how do we solve this problem for the town? And that's what I'm saying, fifty fifty, we have, we can't just rely on the two and a half that's gonna go, we have to look at other ways too.
Yep.
For that.
So I think, no, I, and I think that that's a a concern and a consideration for sure. Um I think when we did the most, when we did the two and a half override recently, the school was involved, but we didn't. We didn't as a town really go to them and say, what are your true needs, whether it was Wachusett or Bay Path, either or. Um and so I think that's an area that we need to learn from and I kind of default to to what Shrewsbury had done a few years ago. And passed a very large comprehensive, no, Shrewsbury's not a regional district, so school district, so they have a little bit more conversation. Um ability to have conversation with their school, but their school is still a large percent of their their overall budget. They passed a very large override, multi-year override with very targeted commitments. That were targeted commitments from both the school committee and the schools as well as the the staff um and and the town. Um and the, any overages I think that they had collected, they invested and have reaped rewards in that investment. Because the past, I believe it's been what, four years or something, Austin? Um four or five years that they've had, the the market has done quite well. So I think if we were ever, i- if we were to get to a point to discuss an override. Eh having some of those commitments and discussions with both Wachusett and Bay Path and and the town uh is beneficial.
Through the chair, can I bring up one more thing and I hope I'm not, I don't mean, believe me, I apologize, I don't wanna drag this on anymore, but. It still drives me crazy when I drive by those properties on Maple Ave and they just are rotting. Why can't we market our town land and try to draw in some some developers or something? I mean, it's it's still stuck with the idea, I see, I I don't know, I feel like it comes up every six, eight months and they go. You know, no doubt, we'll do it down that, you know, later on, I just, it's something, it's the lands there, it's if we're. Board at the, regardless of who's on this board, I've been in town twelve years, the whole twelve years, regardless of the board members, everyone says, bring business into town. But yet, nobody markets anything and I I don't understand, you know, so I don't know if that's something we could maybe. Push for or why it hasn't been done, I'm, I know we talked about it briefly, probably a year ago or something, but. Has there been any movement or discussion about something like that or?
Well, so I, if I may, I think we've been working RDIC and EDC kind of with the. The help of staff and everything have been working to to define their charges, their individual charges. Um and then uh the hope is that those charges will come to us as a board and probably have a a joint meeting. Um likely whether it's ju- it's whether it's just select board and RDIC and then select board and EDC or whether it's all three.
But that's for town buildings, right? You're talking about town buildings?
No, 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 this would also be for for town owned property and not only the Heights property, but all the town owned property.
Oh, okay. Outside? Yeah, I just, that's an example, cause you drive by it a hundred times, so I'm just.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 but no, I think that that's one of the considerations that has been in the works the past couple months and I think. There's been recent progress on that um to to ha- and I'm looking at Tim cause he's on RDIC.
Why, why isn't the property marketed, I'm just curious, why isn't?
Was marketed, that's why we have um Harbor Classic Homes and there's. One or two other takers that, I I don't wanna go in too much detail, but I think to to Leah's point, the EDC and the. RDIC basically have turned into like the marketing and the land management group. And the thought process is, we're in a pyramid. John Carbono is the man that everything comes into, he'll work with Austin to vet out any issues or any, you know, if somebody comes in with a s- a suggestion. And then from there, it'll go to the RDIC and the EDC. But really, the ED- EDC is feeding it up through John and to Austin to get it, to get, what's I'm looking, get opportunities in. From the marketing standpoint, um. I don't have a good answer for um the two pieces, only two pieces left and then a back one. The back one is is being in discussion now, when I say the back one, where the heights is, there's something up top. There's a discussion point for um rugby and a potential, another opportunity there, so that's being taken care of. The one um which is next to, I call it the Mozio property, next to it, right, to Mozio's Garage. That's an opportunity that RDIC's talked about and we've sort of, we wanna see by phase one and phase two. How the uh um houses are being sold and then there's an opportunity to talk about. You know, we, we, I think the discussions come up about a medical, you know, like a uh uh, I don't wanna, I'm having a brain.
Urgent care.
Urgent care, or like an apple care, an apple uh center for having um potential for. Medical supplies, things like that, trying to get some, not, you know, not a market, not a market basket in there, but something smaller businesses. I use the word strip mall because that's what I'm used to from the Midwest, but something along that aspect, the property across from it. It's just a tough sell and I've already talked to Chris Koloski about, there's a pipeline, there's a sewer pipeline that goes right through it.
Oh, really?
And I've asked, I've asked from an engineering standpoint, is there any chance we could take that out and move it up the, onto the road and then come down? Well, the advantage unfortunately of that pipe going that way is the natural drainage. So it's to the town, it would be, as Chris said, significant money. To come up with a uh uh basically a slope and a new sewer line, so that's gonna be a tough property, even if we market it. On top of that is, as the ConCon knows, we've got uh conservation land over there too, or uh.
Well.
What DCR and and co- and uh water issues over on that side, so. I believe there's coming, but right now, the focus is get the, get the Heights property up and running and from that perspective. Um as Austin's run into with grid issues and Verizon issues, you're up against utility that just basically says, it's our way or the highway. I mean, they they would have been farther, in my opinion, they would be farther along if they just had a transformer. They can't, you can't give occupancy permits to houses without power and that's where they've been stuck right now. So that, that's a tough, that's for the public know, cause I know I've taken some flack on, why aren't we selling more houses, people are in, you know, they've lost their houses, well.
This wasn't, this wasn't talked about beforehand, though, they didn't.
Well, the grids said they were gonna put it in, they said everything, but if they can't get a transformer from their supplier, which.
Oh, the, so they can't get one, literally can't get.
And I know that because I work for EverSource and I'm in the same boat, I can't get transformers for my project. They just started coming in because the suppliers are backed, whether it's COVID, whether it's overseas issues, whatever, so. Hopefully that'll be freeing up and we'll see some movement on houses being sold moving forward at the Heights, that's sort of a. Long answer, but uh um and and again, we believe that down the road, if we're gonna market this, we really need a commercial. Uh we've talked with the EDC about, you know, Jeff Gibbs, who's a, who's a residential real estate of getting commercial and. In Austin's role and John's role, the previous town administrator and previous planner. Had a, had a great relationship with a commercial developer and I think we can do that down the road too. I think there's opportunities, but to answer your question, I believe, yeah, no, no, when I said down the road. I meant, you know, a year or two around, we've got.
No, I know, I know.
I truly believe the EDC and RDIC are on a path to be successful and we've lined things out. Just to give an update, which I know if anybody watched it, we've asked the EDC member to join the RDIC so we can have that open communication. And we can go to their meetings too, so I think between the two of us. We'll be trying to get business in, but as everybody knows, um I'll give this to Dick Williams, we don't have one forty nine that would go bypasses. And get us a road out, that's that, that's Rutland's challenge since the twenty five years I've been here, we just don't have.
Yeah, no easy way in or out of.
The access, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to add to that as well, I I I, you know, the comments from uh Tim in the chair, I think are all. Um very true, but also just to put it really simply, um I think towns are designed to not be real estate developers. Just, you know, everything that we do costs more, um and it's more complicated, right? I mean, the RDIC unfortunately has to follow a whole public procurement process just to even talk to someone, pretty, not talk to someone, but engage. Um from a, you know, real substantive perspective on developing the land over there. Uh where there's other models that don't necessarily follow that, um so that's, that's certainly one of the challenges, but also, you know. There's also just been a change in seats everywhere, we have a new um state administration with new folks that have different priorities than several years ago. Housing is still a big priority, but probably not in Rutland. Um so, you know, I think we're establishing those relationships, um you know, so we've had meetings with uh some of the regional. Uh like the regional chamber, um and had them come out and look, Mass Tire was a part of the group that came out and looked. State agencies, believe it or not, have come out and looked at the property, um and then also just trying to take advantage of the the free resources, so. The property, I believe, is now marketed on some of the um state real estate development sites to put it out there. Which I think happened as well a few years ago and then was dropped off, so now we've re-advertized it on there for free. Um to put out there and I I'm, as far as I know, I don't know if there's been any leads, it's only been, I think, advertised for a week or so. Um also taking advantage of just free designations, right? Um so the way that we're zoned, we're actually zoned to be a bio ready community, um so biotechnology ready community, you think about. Uh that's a huge growing industry, well, everywhere, but especially in in Worcester. Um and um the industry itself is looking to expand from Worcester, so as a community close, you, you know, dare I say suburb of Worcester. You know, why can't we attract that, our zoning is already set up in a, in a way that the, that conforms to that designation, so. We applied for it, we haven't received back if we have been designated it, but why not, it's free. Um and see what comes of it, so trying to take advantage of stuff, but also, I think just. You know, I think the point that EDC and RDIC are still working on getting coordinated, that's also a huge component. Um so there's some projects that are happening um in both committees, but I just wanna highlight some of the good work that's being done by EDC on. Um they received a a grant from CMRPC um to assist with developing a business brochure and a guide. Um which will be a free resource for us to put out um to prospective business owners, so. Again, it it's one of those that takes a while to develop, especially from a strategy perspective. Um you know, planning boards working on their master plan, which is a big tool for us to attract things. Open space committees working on the open space and recreation plan.
We did my pitch, we, the planning board is done reviewing it.
There you go.
It's going to CMRPC for final updates, so it should be coming to us to prove, to get to you guys. I am not gonna say date, but I I I hope within a month, um we would have this before the select board with our master plan ready to go, cause. We've cleaned up eighteen pages, John and Dick and I have done that, so I think we're in good shape.
But all that means a lot, right, so people like, when, you know, if you, if you're, if you're out to dinner, which I've had this. I've had this conversation with someone, what does Rutland need? I don't know, we're still working on our master plan, I'm not really sure, but when that's done, I can say, well, here's our master plan, this is exactly what we're looking for. Uh or here's our open space and recreation plan, here's whatever else it is, here's our business guide, so, um but. There's opportunities that come up, I think at that uh business for the agricultural forum last week. We, I had an off the cuff conversation with someone who's interested in doing something that I didn't know about before. So stuff like that happens and then if it's real, it advances and gets to the level of RDIC, EDC, select board. Um but you know, I don't think we've heard really anything concrete, except for today possibly, which the board will hear in the next couple of months or weeks. Um good news about business, so, um but we'll get there.
And if I, if I may, I think also the the town's not, you said the town, is it? Towns aren't historically good landlords or real estate developers or or contractors. Um I think one of our other challenges is a lot of our um appropriately zoned. Property is owned by individuals who aren't able or willing to do work to bring existing buildings up to co- current code. Um I know that there's been a number of businesses that wanted to come in, but there was no um AD access, ADA accessible space for them. Um the the rent becomes astronomical, um the repairs, even just the 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 work to get into some of the places. Is is cost prohibitive for a small business, um and so it's easier for stuff to sit empty. Um than it is to do anything and that also doesn't help us, so I think one of the. Um EDC has been working with some of the businesses and the property owners to kind of see what what could work. Um and I think my, one of my hopes with having some of the more um high level conversations start at the staff level. Is understand what some of the challenges are, for example, maybe at the Heights, it's utilities, getting, whether it's water and sewer or electricity or whatever. And understanding what some of those challenges are, is there state or in or federal money available that might help? Offsets a business that wants to come in there, might help the town offset some of those expenses and trying to be a little bit more creative with ways to make it. Um less cost prohibitive on on the small businesses coming in. Um so I think that those are all some of the things that are that are happening and nothing is again overnight and so. I think we've all been, heard the frustration, lived the frustration, um that it seems like it's. A lot has been stagnant, um I think the work in the past couple months between the two groups has been really promising and and forthcoming. Um and then with, I know with um the open space and rec plan, um and the kind of two charges, there will, should be an inventory of not just the Heights property. But the town owned land property and what those restrictions or con- considerations are. Um whether that also talks, ends up talking to the state or something for land swap opportunities or or whatever. Um kind of working with a lot, so, but again, that's not. A a tomorrow fix, but we can work to get there, we can work to make tomorrow's tomorrow better, so. Um does that kind of help, Austin, as far as, I mean, it's not a whole lot of high level guidance for you, but um for the.
Yeah, I think that's a good start and of course, so we're gonna start the process. Um is also just why they wanna make sure that the board is aware of, and then as we receive updates, I'll come back and if I need further guidance, I'll.
Yeah.
Ask for such.
And I know with the the bylaw changes and everything, kind of the fin. And I know with the, the bylaw changes and everything, kind of the FinCom, the financial piece of it kind of has shifted from a FinCom focus to more town administrator and then by, by proxy kind of select board. Um, I don't think FinCom has met recently, but I know that they're posted for, uh, will be posted for our joint meeting. Um, and I don't know if it's worth just trying to add to, if they're amenable to either adding to their agenda or scheduling another more recent, more frequent meeting to have the same conversation, because they still are that advisory piece and might be able to offer some, some perspective that, that we don't have.
Austin, quick question for you. In that instruction that you're gonna send out, does that give the date you need it back?
Yes.
That's what I need to know, cause I, I'm the, on the, just again, I'm being selfish, but on the planning side, I wanna make sure that I get this time this year to John, but I need to get him.
Yeah, I believe, so I believe, I, I think your subject, or I think you're, you're planning to discuss it at your meeting next week. Um, John already kind of gave me your request, so.
Okay.
And he'll talk to you further about it, but the intent is to incorporate board requests as well.
Yeah, cause he gives you his, all we do is give him the piece and he takes care of everything. I just wanna make sure we got that back on time this year. All right, thanks.
Planning board asked for fifty thousand dollars, no, I'm scared.
Fifty-five.
Yeah.
Um, we're going with the Milford um planning board salaries of fifty-five each, sorry.
Um, so, um, moving on to our next agenda item. I think if uh you are semi-comfortable with the budget conversation, Austin. Um, is the town charter, I had wanted to get this back on our radar, we had discussed it kind of before. Um, Austin had left, we had asked, um, I think a few board members had asked for some additional information, which Austin provided. Um, and just as a reminder, um, the Austin and Tamika applied for, and we received a thirty-thousand-dollar grant from the community, um Commonwealth Community Compact Best Practices Program to fund this. Um, there's still a town meeting warrant article from, I believe, twenty-eighteen that also allocated free cash for this. So it's a, there's a um additional if the thirty thousand is not enough, um, for whatever reason. We had been provided kind of a draft charge, um, and which included the membership. And I think there was some conversation about how that membership would, would um tease out and everything. Um, and Austin just provided us with um some of the information um as far as the distribution of communities that have charters, don't have charters, have charters in progress. Um, and the makeup of those, of those communities. Um, I wanted to get it back on, not to approve tonight, but just to get it back on the radar and for conversation with the intent that we would approve a charge and open a call um in, in potentially our next regular scheduled meeting. Um, I know the Collins Center, Austin has engaged with them to see if they are available. They are the ones that have done a majority of the, or a lot of the um charter work in the state. Um, they, I believe Hubbardson worked with them when they did it. I'm not sure who Paxton is working with now for their update, um, if they're working with anyone, if they're doing it internally. Austin, I'm not sure if you can provide me.
I don't know who Paxton's working with.
Yeah. Um, if I remember correctly, um, some of the conversation was, a lot of the conversation was about the um membership and kind of the draft membership was that it was seven to nine members um appointed by the select board, um, that it would be um one member from the select board, one member from the planning board, one member from uh Wachusett, the Wachusett Regional School Committee, um, and one member from the finance committee. And then the additional members, whether it's a total of seven to nine members, ideally odd number, um, would be community members at large. Um, I think some of the conversation was if FinCom felt they could sit on this committee. Um, and if uh since select board, planning board and um WRSD school committee are all elected officials, how that works, um, if it's an appointed member that has turnover. The thought is that this would probably be about an eighteen-month process depending on when it starts. I think the timeline was the hope that it would be put forth at the May twenty-twenty-sixth annual town meeting, and if not there, then that's fall special town meeting, depending on the timing. Um, I think this is a process, um, it would be a town meeting um authorization to submit to the state legislature for a home run petition and special act. So, um, like I said, I don't know if anybody has any immediate conversation um for either the charge or the membership. I just wanted to get, to get back on our radar and just make sure that everyone had the opportunity to see the um, the additional research that Austin did. Thank you, Austin, for pulling that all together, I know it was a lot of work, I don't think it was all readily, easily accessible. So, um, I think it took some.
So the membership on the committee would be put in place by us, the board?
Yeah.
And that's by what, majority vote or?
Yeah, so it would be similar to our current um board and committee appointment process. My personal hope would that be that when we, when we set the charge and the membership requirements and we put the call out to the boards and commissions and and the community, that we have more than the five to nine kind of interest and we have a, a, a good poll to choose from. Um, because the, the charter really, it lays out, Austin, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but really kind of lays out the, the structure of government in, in a community. It's kind of like the town's constitution, um, in a lot of ways. And I know when I go to MMA meetings and talk to people and like, oh, well, how do you do that? It's all, well, it's laid out in their, it's laid out in their charter. I'm like, oh, we don't have a charter, and they're like, how do you govern? Like, well, um, it's a lot of bylaws and the bylaws have some teeth, but the charter is really kind of the, the, the groundwork. And then the bylaws are almost the policy piece of the charter.
Mm-hmm. Um, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I still struggle with, with the school side of things. And like, where would, like, having a school committee member on this committee? Like, how would, how would being a regional school district play into a charter? Because I feel like we really don't have a say in anything associated with the schools. So I, I'm just trying to understand how having a, a school committee member as part of this charter and what involvement, what would the charter say about schools within?
Yeah, I mean, so without, I guess, knowing specifically the um language that's on the, in our district agreement, right? Cause that's sort of the governing document for the regional school district, um, which has, I think, explicit provisions on uh membership there. I think we'd have to, as a part of this charter discussion, make sure that those are aligned. If there's any changes that are needed on the district agreement side, have those conversations with the regional school district. But um, that is, I think, the one challenge of this, uh, would be the regional school district component. For, for example, how um school committee members, for example, are elected, what their terms look like. Um, if there's no, if there's not a willingness to change that um district agreement, we would just have to make sure that the language wi- within the charter aligns with the district agreement. Um, but, you know, being their own government entity, there's, you know, I think that challenge there versus, you know, I think the community would have greater input for, you know, what the composition of other boards and commissions uh elected or appointed would look like, because they're under the domain of the town of Rutland, right? And not independent, okay?
It just seems like for.
I think.
Depending on how much involvement it is, if it's strictly just a matter of we need to decide how the election uh, or the elector, the election of school committee members is handled within reserving a seat for them, just for that seems.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if it's warranted.
No, I understand, so, and I guess the reason why is just to be, because they're, I'm thinking more for the other provisions of the charter that are important, not just elected officials, but some of the administrative procedures. Finance is a big component, so making sure that there's a voice from the largest component of our budget is at the table for that discussion, um, and that their input is relayed in the financial provisions um of the town charter. But this was just a draft that I, you know, took from some other communities, so if, you know, if, if the board wants to.
But let me ask you this, so we, we don't really have communication with our school committee members. So is this a way to make that happen? So that they're more representative of town voice or?
It's a good way to get them involved, for sure.
I think that this is, eh, I think that this is a, a definitely an area for conversation, because the regional district agreement is very explicit on a lot of the things um that, that the powers that school committee has, that the district has. Um, so I think to, to your point, Jen, a little bit, like, I think there's value to having some sort of school, broad, broad school representation because of the budget components, but also a lot, and I was just kind of trying to look, I'm, I haven't looked at Paxton's yet, trying to look at Hubbardson's, because Hubbardson is also part of Quabin, a regional school district. How other communities that are part of regional school districts handle the regional district in their charters? Because I think with Wachusett especially, our regional agreement is, tends to be very district-friendly and not very town-friendly.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's not just a Rutland town, it's just any of the five towns.
Yeah.
Um, and so how much we can do, because to do any sort of amendments to the regional district requires school committee votes and all member town votes also. So it's a, a more in-depth process, that just because we say in a charter we want it, doesn't mean we can do it, because.
We can do it, right. Um, so, I'm, I'm all for more, more communication and, and doing that.
Right.
And if this is a, a means of being able to at least bring them to the table to have those discussions, where we're not doing any of that right now.
Right, that's. Right, yeah. So maybe for that piece, Austin, we can kind of, I can do a little bit more exploring, you can do a little bit more exploring. We can ask Collins if, Center, if they've worked with, I'm sure that, I mean, they've worked with Hubbardson, I know for sure, um, how the regional school district agreements kind of at a high level fit into a charter and what the value is to having that input or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Sure.
Tim, I see your hand, I just wanna see if there's any board.
No, that's fine, I just gotta, it's a quick one for this.
All right, go ahead, Tim.
Uh, Leah, through you or through Austin, is, did, and I apologize, I don't know the new bylaws as well as I should, but is the FICOM still not allowed to be on any, so we'd have to give them a special dispensation to be on this committee? Cause I didn't think, I don't remember, the old bylaw wouldn't allow them to be on anything else. They could, couldn't have any opportunity. Did the new one eliminate that? I don't remember off the top of my head. If it didn't, how do we get them on this committee then?
So I don't think it did, I had a little bit of a pushback with FinCom at the time, even with the old bylaw, that if it's spelled out that we need a designate from FinCom, because I think that there's, I personally think that there's value to have a representation from FinCom on specific boards and committees. And if it's a representative, if it is officially declared that it's a representative from an ex, a certain, a particular board or committee, then I think that there should be that representation. Um, I think FinCom sometimes puts up a fight and sometimes doesn't. So I don't know what the current um input would be from this FinCom, but I do think that that was, I remember that being a conversation that we had at that bylaw. Um, because to, to, to your point, that I think that it's that they shouldn't be serving on other appointed board, um, like long-term appointed board and committee, like a, a KongKong or an elected position, like a planning board or select board or something. But for something that's, that has a, a designated charge and.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, cause I didn't wanna go down the path where you guys put this all together and then the brakes get hit, cause somebody throws something to the state saying you can't do it.
Right, and that was one of the ones that we had asked at the previous meet, you know, we kind of had gone back and forth at our previous meeting when we brought it forward.
I think it's a great idea, cause you've got a large financial budget consideration with the charter, so I think it's a great idea. Okay, thanks.
So that was, but yeah, so I think that maybe that's a con- conversation to have with FinCom also, if they're amenable to, to, to a, to an appointment like that. And I think for this board, if they're, this board's amenable to that, again, I think that we have other, other situations as well that there's some. Yeah.
The advisors, it makes sense.
Right, and a lot of the, the, the charter does talk about kind of the financial structure and everything, so. Um, Austin, or sorry, Harry, Paul, uh, Tom, do you guys have any questions, concerns with the kind of four consideration? I think we've heard about the, the regional school piece, um, and the FinCom piece. I'd be interested to hear your take on the, the value or not to having a FinCom representative on it before we, we explore a lot.
On the charter piece, you said?
Yeah, on the charter committee, yep.
Um, to be honest with you, uh, I haven't read the whole charter that I got and the examples of it. So I guess I'd have to defer my at until I see what's involved in the charter to see whether it'd make a difference if they're on it or not. Uh, in other words, what, what, what value do they add to the charter? Where it's more of a constitution than a financial directive? So maybe somebody can answer me that.
Well, I, I just, I, I think trying to be inclusive of many of the important voices in the community. So obviously respectful of the select board, respectful of the planning board, respectful of the finance committee uh and their authority, respectful of the school committee and their position in the community. And then also just remembering that, that, those are just what, four or five voices. Also, um, at-large members, so members of the community who can participate, because this is gonna be their charter, too. So, you know, I think the financial provisions will, would be one provision uh of, or one chapter, if you will, of the charter. But there's a lot of other stuff there that I think trying to be inclusive of all the voices that could have a perspective, um, and very different perspective, right? Cause those are totally different voices um on each of the potential chapters of a, of a town charter.
I mean, I, I have nothing of objecting to having them on. I'm looking at, we've got nine spots available. So, and I agree with Leah that if we get fifteen people, we gotta seriously consider who, who of those fifteen will sit on the board, given the mandatory ones that are already there. So that's my concern. I mean, if, if the charter says if the financial component is important, then obviously the financial uh committee should be there. But I gotta take a look at the whole perspective of everybody that's gonna be sitting on that. Cause this is a dramatic change in the way government is going to be authorized. Not in the way it works, but in the way it's authorized, we're going from bylaw to a charter. So a lot different, so I just wanna make sure that we have the people on there that uh we can depend on to get it right, that's all.
Yeah, so I, I would respectfully disagree on the, the major perceived change. I, I think that's exactly what it is, is this perceived change. You think um of the communities in, and you look at that map, I think it's the last page. Um, there's a lot of communities, especially in Worcester County, that already have charters. Um, you know, two communities that are directly abutting Rutland have a charter, and I think they have the same problems that we do. Um, they have the strengths, uh, the same strengths that we do, they're probably in the same position. And I don't think it's because they have a charter or they don't, I think it's just because of, it's twenty-twenty-four and it's a really interesting time to be municipality, just to simplify that. But uh more so, it's just the overall governance structure, right? Um, and really nailing down and solidifying the governance structure that exists today. And I think to where um Rutland voters and residents want um that to be. And it's obviously, um, because it is an act of the legislature and has to be signed by the governor, I think it's an even more significant um demonstration that uh Rutland residents uh have gone through this process, which is a very comprehensive process, as you know, we wouldn't have a charter tomorrow, right? Um, and just on the membership, um, you know, I think another alternative is you could, you could completely get rid of membership from each of the um committees. I suspect you'd receive some feedback from the community on that, so again, just trying to balance out um representation there. But, or, or you could expand the committee if you wanted to.
So we're not limited to nine?
No, no, again, this was a draft charge that, that was, I was given, you know, five or six different um potential charges from the Collins Center.
Yep.
Um, and I just kind of meshed them together and, you know, thought, hey, what makes sense pay maybe for Rutland. But by all means, this is just a draft for you to critique and modify.
Okay.
Let me see fit.
I will say, I think, eh, you, you probably have experienced this even with CIPC and everything. If the committee gets too, too large, there's always quorum considerations, right? And so it's finding that balance, it's having a diversified enough, um. And so it's finding that balance is having a diversified enough um swath of the of the community with also being able to maintain quorum for this should be a limited eighteen months to two-year process, but um that that's still a long-term commitment for people to make for quorum considerations. So the larger the committee, the higher number you have to meet for quorum.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, I I think I don't think that would be an issue though.
And so.
Where it's only eighteen months, I don't think that would be an issue for a lot of people, you know, but it is a consideration.
I mean, we've had a lot of com- even I think Town Center Study had some issues at one point, that was obviously during COVID. Um master plan had a lot of issues, uh open space and rec had a lot of issues. So I think especially some of these tends to 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 have that as consideration. But if we go in saying that it's an eighteen-month to two-year consideration, that might that might
Again, we we hope that will get more than nine or ten or twelve, we'll we get a lot to apply for this.
And I think a lot of the bylaw work that has been done, that the ad hoc bylaw committee done was with the intent of it being a very kind of groundwork for um for a charter. Um and hearing, we had those those conversations and they passed um at town meeting and then were accepted by the AG's office. So that's kind of a good template for some of the things, but the charter can go into.
To Paxton, Holden and Hubbardson.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Hubbardson. That's it, so.
And then obviously zoom out. Sorry.
It would be interesting to know why Templeton, Phillips, Petersham, Barry don't have charters. It'd be interesting to know that.
Yeah. Well, I guess the question, you know, have they explored it? I don't know. Um you know.
What's it?
This took a while, hold on, this took a while to to do this research. I certainly think it would take a lot longer to call everyone and say, hey, why don't we have a charter or why do you? Um but I just also just in my memo, I just wanna be very clear that there's also communities in here that, you know, they show up red on the map. But they've gone through the process of enacting, you know, dozens of special acts to formalize their charter. So they essentially have a charter, but it's, you know, in, you know, twelve different special acts, which I also don't think is very transparent for the community. You know, you were to ask, for example, Lexington, hey, um you know, what authority uh does the executive office have? Well, okay, so most people think the executive office is the select board, but actually in Lexington, it's the town manager because they have a town manager special act, um which transferred a lot, if not uh most of that authority. So this also doesn't tell the story. This is just a simple, was Austin able to find a charter or not?
Yeah.
You know, and it took a while. Um I think my wife made fun of me for how much time I spent on this, but um but it
That was really funny.
it does look kinda cool, which I was kinda proud of. But um but you know, you can see that there's a handful of communities in yellow that are also working on it. So I think Harry, your question was, well, you know, communities in Western Mass. Um again, I would argue that we're really not Western Mass, we're kind of Central, so you look at the communities in Central Mass. But even Western Mass has, um you know, I think that uh some of the communities that are um put together a little bit more formalized, they have gone through or they're starting to go through the process
Mm-hmm.
um as well. So you know, yeah, while you look and you think that it's mostly like an Eastern Massachusetts kind of thing, um you can see that even Worcester County, the the average for Worcester County matches statewide. So statewide, it's about forty-eight percent, Worcester County alone is already about forty-eight percent
Mm-hmm.
um that have uh charters as well.
And I imagine for some of the smaller communities, it could be a um a money issue.
Yeah.
Um cause it costs money to 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 do it well. Um and so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Austin.
Yeah, of course.
Um so I think we have some feedback, we can do a little bit more exploration um for this board. If you have time to go through kind of um Austin, maybe we can send around, Tamika, we can send around um Hubbardstons and Paxtons um charters, I have Hubbardstons pulled up right now, I know cha- um Paxton is going through their charter review. That's the other consideration is that charter should be reviewed periodically after they're established. Um so it's not just a forever and always, it's kind of a continued living document.
Yep.
Um so we can kind of look and see a little bit for this board. Um if you have any questions or considerations, um send them through Tamika and Austin, um we can kind of collate them as well.
Can I just add to that? That's a great point as well. So this isn't, you know, like a lot of things, this isn't like you just do it and put it on a shelf. Um so for example, in Wichita, then by charter, um we had to review the charter every five years uh and had to review bylaws through the charter every uh two years. So you know, every five years, a select board would establish a charter review committee, they go through the process, make sure that things are up to date um and then goes back and has to be updated. So you know, it's just allows for constant attention to the most important document that you could argue exists in a community.
Thank you, Austin.
Yep.
Anything else from the board with the charter right now?
No, thank you.
Um moving on, under old business, we have the collective bargaining agreement, which we had already um done um when we came right out of the executive session, I believe that's all said, is that correct Tamika? I just wanna make sure that's good.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um moving into new business, um we have the uh an a new business, um Maple Ab Diner. Um we'll ha- be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony hosted by the Economic Development Committee Commission on um October twenty-first, I believe, at four?
Eight, four thirty.
Four thirty, thank you, um PM. Um and so uh we have a citation and I would entertain a motion to approve and sign the citation for the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Maple Ab Diner.
So moved.
Second.
Is there conversation, consideration, discussion? Harry, none, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
That's a nine.
Yeah, I'll write.
Yeah, I'll write.
Waitman, I. Um from the clerk's office, we have a request to sign the November um
Warrant.
Warrant article or warrant, election warrant, sorry, my brain just had a space in the moment. Um and so uh is there a specific motion that we need, Tamika, or we just need a motion to sign the?
No, we needed, did not provide anything specific.
So I would entertain a motion to sign the November fifth, twenty twenty-four um election warrant as um presented.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
That's a nine.
Ledger.
Yeah, I'll write.
Waitman, I. Um we um a few meetings ago, um Tamika thankfully pulled together all of the select board policies that um we could find in the office and throughout town um buildings. And thank you, Tamika. Um and so we, she handed us that printed packet and I believe it's online as well. Um thank you, and I've asked to kind of go through um a list to prioritize the policies and which we will begin reviewing, hopefully in our next meeting, we can go through them. Um some of the big ones, one of the the biggest one to me is the board and committee appointment policy. Just I feel like this past um year or so, it's been a little bit of a disservice to the members um potentially who are interested in attending or being appointed. Um and a lot of back and forth as well as the from the board, um existing board and committee chairs. So I wanted to review that one. Um I think through last meeting, it came to light that we don't really have a clear straight acceptance policy. Um and that that would, I think the feedback that we had heard from planning board kind of throughout the conversations over the years also would be that would be really helpful if there was a a dedicated policy for that. Um and we have the list provided here, um a town building key policy. Um there's been some issues getting into buildings and rooms. Um code of conduct and ethics for boards and committees. This was updated for the employee side in our um personnel and HR policies that comprehensive review that this board, the board did last year. Um and so taking a look again at it for um elected boards and appointed committees, uh uh appointed boards and committees as well. Um the re- remote participation in meetings because MGL has changed significantly about that um post-COVID. And I don't think that that policy was ever formally updated. So ensuring that we are in compliance with MGL, but also how the board wants to handle um chairs being remote or not remote and everything um is a consideration. Um the community center slash building on Glenwood, building use policy. Um the procurement policy, street sign requests, because we came, that came before us a few meetings ago, that there was no real clear, there was an application for street sign requests, but there was no real policy or formal um how-to on that. Um grievance procedure under ADA, some of this is just kind of fitting in with MGL and federal re- rules and regs. Um the electronic communication policy, public comment guidelines, public records access guidelines, smoking policy regarding municipal buildings and municipal property, real estate acquisition, um regulation prohibiting sale of certain goods during Fourth of July. Um filming permit, which has come up periodically as Central Mass actually has a fairly strong um filming uh business. Um and so we've had a few kind of over the year inquiries about that. Um and fraud detection, prevention and detection policy, that's kind of an ongoing, ever ever-going thing. Um this is kind of the the general my my idea of priority list. But I'm happy if the board has gone through any of the other, gone through the entire list and would like to amend. Um some of these, I think we might be able to get through fairly quickly, some are definitely gonna require a little bit more conversation, I think. Um similar to bylaws, I would like to try try to go through um ideally a couple, you know, get one, if it's a big one a meeting, if not, some some of the smaller ones, a couple of meetings, just to get them so that at least we can say we put eyes on everything. Um and that they've been updated, at least in conformance with MGL or or to match the employee personnel piece or the um financial pieces that we did last year. And I think with bylaws, with the new bylaws, we have some tweaking that we should should look at as well.
Yeah, if I may, I just wanted to commend the board because if you look at the the list of all the policies that we have, there's a great deal that this board has updated just in the last year. Um whether it's updating or creating policies where ones didn't exist before. You guys have really made a good dent in it. Um and I feel like, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, I feel like it's kind of worked well when um you know, our office kind of put something together to give you something to look at and then it kind of starts the discussion of what you want, what we don't want reconsideration. So that's kind of our hope with this prioritization list is that it will give our office feedback so we know what to work on on the backend to then bring back to the board, so you're not kind of starting from a blank slate.
I appreciate having a starting point.
Mm.
Certainly. Yeah. I just wanted to update the the board that we've, I know we've had a lot of recent consideration and talk about the welcome to Rutland town sign policy, sponsorship policy. Um if you remember, if you recall, we asked uh EDC to look at that. Um it didn't make it onto their agenda for their October meeting, although they they looked at it, but they didn't. I think they're going to formally discuss it at their November meeting. And the hope is to hopefully provide feedback so that we can, this board can hopefully have a finalized version going before the the new year.
Yeah.
Um and I think timing wise, that's kind of what the office was hoping for, to be able to start getting sponsorship um uh material out and ready so that any new signs can be done for the spring, kind of installation and everything, if that works. But I just wanted to update the board cause I know we've been back and forth on that policy particularly um and where that was. Um but again, I'm happy to be amenable for um this. I would really like to, if the board's amenable, to work with board and committee appointment policy and street acceptance policy. Um and maybe even town building key policy straight away, those three um straight away. Um because I think we don't really have a street acceptance policy, the other two I think can use, we can benefit from some significant tweaking. Um I think also um a lot of the other ones, hopefully will be a little bit more quick-moving. Um but those I think might be ones that we might need to look at a few for a meeting, you know, a meeting.
Yeah, if it's helpful, I can resend out that packet that had all of the policies as they exist right now so you can see what that language looks like. Um I will, oh yeah, that one. Um and also is so the town planner has already started drafting a street acceptance policy. Um I think everybody agreed that that was best as a collaborative effort between the select board and the planning board since there's pieces to both of it and and a lot of the the subject matter expertise is probably on the planning board's side. Um so our office will collaborate with John to kind of get something together and then bring that to both boards to hopefully a- a- agree on in the end and and hopefully have ready to go in time for any street acceptance requests we get for the spring town meeting.
Yeah.
Um I would just say that I would I would like to see the code of conduct and ethics for boards and committees done first and then move on the other ones. I'm kinda like like refreshing our the whole code of conduct and ethics before we get into anything else. Just doing that and refreshing it first and then moving on. So I'd just like to see that one done first.
I'm, I mean, I'm perfectly am- amenable to moving that up. I think it's, I I don't know that that one needs a whole lot of tweaking, but we can look at MGL for that. Um and and go that that route for sure.
I don't think it'll take a lot of time to do that one.
Just something to put out there as well, I think um well, there's a lot of policies here, there's also others. It you know, it may be a good idea if the board wanted to assign a policy as like a project. So Harry, for example, if you're really passionate about the code of conduct, um you know, something that maybe you could designate to each of you, you know, two or three policies, for example, to work on uh with staff and then come back and report back to the board. It's a great way to give you a project, especially if you're bored and want something to work on. And I've seen that occur in other communities as well. We'll give Tom like five or six.
That's a great suggestion, Austin, I love that. I definitely want in on the street acceptance. Oh yeah, they're not gonna like me.
Interesting.
Yeah, good, be interested.
And just to note too, I I think Tamika mentioned it, um some of these policies are already, I think, covered under your recently approved financial and personnel policies, so is there a need already to review them? Maybe you just kind of dispose of those as they're already covered. Um and then, you know, one thing that stuck out to me too, because it recently came up, was the smoking policy on town buildings. I actually think that that's a board health um directive, so you know, maybe working on and deferring to the board health and their statutory authority on that.
I was gonna say, maybe even asking to your point, Austin, what is planning board or board of assessors or um cause I know even for the crumbling foundations, there's been some conversation about that. Um and the board of health, library trustee, you know, working with the other elected boards to say, hey, these are policies that either we need because of best practice or need up have but need updating or or whatever.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um question on procurement policy, you are the procurement officer. Do we need to review that one?
Uh I it's always a good idea to look at procurement, especially because the amount of um money that comes in and out for goods and services. But um most of that is already governed by general law, so you know, everything that we're trained on as procurement officers comes from general law. Um where a lot of towns implement policy is for the components of general law that's not covered. So pretty much anything that's under uh ten thousand dollars. Um so uh I think the policy as it exists now already speaks to that. But again, that was also recently looked at and approved in the financial policies, so.
And so maybe it's, if I may, maybe it's just deciding that we don't need that policy any longer because it's in the the comprehensive financial policy.
Right.
Um but having a a cons- a a dedicated conversation to that before we say we're wiping that or.
And there's some that I think that we kind of also have internal departmental um operating procedures that also kind of further fill in um where there may be gaps um in policy or general law. So you know, procurement is one thing that we I think are asking a little bit more than the policy states just because of how important it is. So um that's also just a layer. So administrative procedures, select board policies, general law, um federal law, things like that, so.
So I'm happy, I mean, if there's board members that feel strongly about working with town staff on kind of work drafting a few of these um in the important, not drafting, but looking at and kind of reviewing them, I'm fine with that. Obviously, any final conversation would come before the entire board. Um I think we don't need to spend hours here tonight assigning these, um.
No, just go.
But.
Pick a couple, we'll do them the next time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, so I think next week or next meeting, if we can see how the agenda is looking, but we can look at, um, code of conduct and. Um, maybe, maybe even street acceptance policy, knowing that. Um, that's kind of gonna be time, if John and planning board feel like they might have, have it available, um, at least a first read. Um, and then if we have a time, look at the board and committee appointment and town building key policy, kind of those four together, depending on how they all piece. So if you feel strongly about any of those, any of our board members, please, um, reach out to Tamika, I think if you don't mind being the point person for that and scheduling time.
If I take filming permit, do I get to talk?
Get to be on camera.
Yeah, yeah, you get to be the star.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, I appreciate all the work that, that, I know it was last board, but it was all five of these members. Did last year with the bylaws, I've said it a gazillion times, but also with the policy piece because. Um, bylaws and policy are really the, the piece of the board that we need to, to be doing and I appreciate that. Um, some of the other considerations is ensuring that once these policies are set, similar to our water sewer regs and our other pieces. That they're followed, um, by not just this existing board and administration, but all future boards and administration. And documenting a little bit, maybe that in a policy or something to ensure that, that these are the checkmarks or whatever, um. I know viewpoint has come in and added some layers of work, um, or checks and balances, but we're not utilizing it fully to the capacity, um.
Okay, cool, um, I just wanna add, cause Tamika did a lot of great work, so, um. It's a great point about following it, because one of the things that we realized is, you know, I think in my office and in, in the select board office, there's this big binder, but. That's probably the only place you can find something, so, um, Tamika did a lot of good work on the select board policies and procedures page. Um, all the policies that exist now, or most of them that exist now, they're published online and categorized. Um, and we did the same thing for the personnel policies and also for the financial policies, so, um, you can find everything. Um, and then as you do your work, we'll continue to update that page so it's visible, cause, you know, if you don't know a policy exists, you don't know you're breaking it.
And I think even for potential considerations for a new policy at some point is even for newly elected, um, members of any board and committee. That what are they handed when they're elected on, um, because I know I wasn't, I personally wasn't handed anything. And I think subsequently, we've been trying to get that MMA handbook for. Select board members to newly appointed or newly elected select board members, but. It's again been trying to dig through policy and procedure, master plans, everything, um, and just kind of. Here's a packet and not necessarily a physical packet, but a, a sheet saying this is where you can go find everything.
Yeah, I was just gonna, it, Austin said what I was thinking is that. Our intention too is to make sure that they're readily available to the public and then that holds us accountable, so that. The public knows the work that's taken place and, and the policies that we should adhere to, because like Austin said. The only reference I had was this binder that I found in the office and then I was able to scrape a couple of things up from like past emails. Um, but that's not any way to, to govern, especially when you have boards that turn over and they have new members, it should really be like a quick easy. Resource of everything that they need, so I think, uh, we really appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
No, and I appreciate the work that you and Austin are doing to get that readily available and to hold for the transparent, transparency piece and. And holding all of us accountable for the public, so, thank you.
And I love anytime I get to some fun on the website, so we should do this way, I'm like, oh my gosh, okay, I love it, thank you.
Um, moving on, we have water biller, uh, water sewer bills, um, this is a board of public works action item, um. That we in the, when we had discussed the water sewer rates increases, we had talked about. Including a informational flyer piece in all of the bills that were to go out, so that people could at least understand. A little bit of history and where everything is coming from, um, in doing the work, I believe Nick, our treasurer collector. Realized that that's actually a language that needs to be approved by, um, select boards in our case. Because we're board of public works as well, um, so this was the, provided to us is a sheet. Um, from the, um, I believe, uh, Nancy from DPW. And Nick worked together to provide to all the rate payers for information. Um, as a, as a just kind of informational insert that would go in all of the, the first, the next set of bills.
Well, yeah, if I may, the, the front sheet that you have that shows the tiers with the different rates, that's something that has always gone out to residents at. Each year when the rates are changed and just to explain it to them, so what we did was is we included the explanation on the increase on the flip side. Because in order to prevent it from being an additional cost, we had to restrict it to a third of a page, so we just put on there, you know, please flip over for more information. Um, so we, we drafted what we hope is a concise but thorough explanation of, of why the rates were increased, but. Certainly, you know, if the board wants to make any changes, um, we would kindly ask you to do that tonight, because we have to get them to Nick to the printer by Thursday. So.
So, I mean, I know that this had kind of gone with wa- with the water department, water sewer department and our office as well is. Nick and treasurer collector, kind of the financial team.
Yep.
Um, so I personally am comfortable with it, but I also, full disclosure, I'm not a rate payer, so I'm not sure what information. Would be helpful as a rate payer, um, above and beyond this, so by all means, I'm. Open to, to that information.
I do have a question for our rate payers, why does the price per hundred cubic feet go up with the usage? Usually when you get more usage, the higher the usage, your rate goes down, why does it go up here?
Yeah, so, um, there's some history here and obviously I think it, it predates me, predates members of this board, I think, so, um, I believe this was a result of. Um, a rate study that was conducted and recommendations, um, for the board of public works select board at that time to consider. Um, the idea is if you're using more water, you should pay more, um, and that's exactly what it is, so, you know, we have meters on. All the houses, we know exactly how much water is, is, uh, you're using, um, so, um, it's a way to. Um, accommodate for the use of the infrastructure by, um, charging more for more water usage. And this has been in place for several years now. And I, and I'll say that the, uh, and this, I think it was reflected as well in the, um, in the rate discussion, but. Uh, most of the community uses between five hundred to twenty-five hundred cubic feet, that's the, that's the highest tier, if you will, so that's kind of where we're. Funding most of the water department budget. But what you do see, and this did happen, I'm sorry, this, I just thought about this, is, you know, when rates increase. Especially at a substantial rate, you do see a, a dip in some of the water usage, um, because people see that impact, so. Um, you know, they've tried to find ways to conserve more also, and I know this was a discussion in the rate disc, uh, when the rate setting hearing, but. Um, you know, statewide, we're having and, and across the country, um, regulatory, regulatory agencies are telling us you need to preserve more water, so. We're also just seeing a lot more people use less, but without question, when people see this, they're gonna say, oh my god, I need to use less water. Um, which long term also has some impacts, uh, positive impacts, um, I think for the environment. Um, and for our very limited water supply.
It does, but I, I guess if I would, again, sitting on a board, I see these things, but. I'll say, you know what, I'm gonna use less water, and then next year, I find out because I didn't use water, I'm gonna get a fifteen percent increase again. So, tell me what to do that I don't keep having to pay these increases, I guess, and I don't expect the answer to that, but that's just.
Well, so.
Through people's minds.
Remember, we had to change the model for how the water department is, water and sewer department is funded, so, um. These are the recurring rates, um, for the water and sewer department, um, they're based on usage, they're based on dwelling units. Um, in years past, these rates, as they were constructed, did not fund the operations of the department, and that's why. Um, it wasn't because it's less water usage, it's just the way that they were constructed did not cover the budget. The way that the water and sewer department made money was connection fees, one-time fees, right, one-time revenues for recurring, um, budget, so. Um, that's why the recommendation was you need to cover it, um, from usage, now, remember, we also lowered the projected usage. Um, overall, we lowered it, especially for the water department, we lowered it by almost a million, um, cubic feet. Um, because we tried to be conservative, um, so I think that, you know, in our models, we're projecting a little bit of decrease in usage, just by the nature of how. Things are, uh, right now, um, but again, based off of the, uh, budget that was set. Based off of lowered estimates, that's where we got to the fifteen.
So this was something that previous boards or pub, boards of public works had agreed to charge, the more you use, the more you pay.
Correct, yep. And certainly not just a Rutland, um, model, I mean, there's lots of communities, I think it's also just a recommendation from the Water Works Association that. You know, you shouldn't pay the same rate as someone who's using four times the amount of water that you are.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, all right, mine's just really brief, I, I don't have anything to add to what's noted here, my only comment is that last paragraph. I don't know that everybody's gonna understand what that means, the way it's, it's kind of like. What does it mean to, if the, if the DOR refuses to certify our tax rate and that we would need to do, go enter into short-term borrowing? What does that actually mean in layman's terms, if there's any way we can? It, it, it makes sense to me, but I just, I'm not sure that anybody's gonna, or maybe people out there that just don't.
To be honest, I would, I, my recommendation would be to strike the first two sentences of that paragraph, because. It is a complicated process, so we could go into that, but it wouldn't fit in on a third of a page, um, I would keep. Starting from on an annual basis to the end, I would, I would keep that as a part of the, um. As a part of the insert.
Um, is there a, I didn't look, I think. Is Steve's presentation available online or a similar pre- pizza, pieces of Steve's presentation? Available online that if we're striking those two lines, that we could say for more information, see the.
Yeah, so I don't know if it is, but.
Site or.
We could certainly.
Kind of explain some of that a little bit more.
Yeah, we, so, um, we can post it on the water department page.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, maybe Tamika, we could just add a line for more information and we could do the link to the water department page.
Thank you, does that work, John?
Yeah, nope, that's fine.
Rest of the board amenable to that, just that it's.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe we could. Take the, we could embed the YouTube video and put it there as well, just so people can watch it if they're interested.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a fact, but it doesn't really mean anything to a lot of people who are gonna read it. They're not gonna understand how the Department of Revenue affects our tax rate to be able to set the tax rate because of our water bill, so.
Yeah.
You know.
I think the thought behind it was just trying to explain that there. Were for, there were further financial implications if the board were not to be able to fund the budget appropriately. But I understand what John's saying, isn't that, it, it's hard to present that in layman's terms, yeah. And then, um, the other insert that you have, that language came specifically from the water department, this is a nationwide initiative. Um, through the EPA that they've now set regulations where they're gonna try to eliminate lead in the water distribution system. So we're essentially to avoid having to go literally door to door and ask folks if we can see their water connection inside their house. They're hoping to get the participation of rate users to just take a photo and send it to the email address provided, so that they can start. Um, as long as we collect at least twenty percent of the data from each street in town. We will have met the EPA's regulations, although their hope is to get more than that, so this is the, the best means that they have to reach everybody.
Um, do we think people are actually gonna do this?
If they're very passionate about their water, maybe.
Hopefully they do, if they don't, the, the DPW staff will have to go door to door.
That's, that's why, should, should there be something just added to this to state, you know, please submit so that we don't need to visit you? Because we need to have information one way or the other.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we could try to add something, but.
Doesn't matter to me, I just.
Like another example, like the unfunded, that's everyone's favorite word, unfunded mandate, right, that.
Yes.
Um, they come out with these regulations and don't, don't really provide a lot of resources to be able to do it, so. Ultimately, we're gonna have, as Tamika mentioned, we're gonna have to do it again, and, um, and we do a little bit of it, just at set locations, not. For each service address, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is, I'm just hopefully.
And we're gonna put additional information on the website as well, we just held off from doing that until we had the board's approval of the language tonight. But we are gonna put this information on, you know, social media, we're gonna, you know, let folks know on the website, so that there's a resource, you know, so if they throw this paper away.
Right.
It doesn't mean they can't access it.
Yeah, no, that's good, thank you.
So, um, is, if the board is amenable to this, I would entertain a motion to approve the language for the informational. Um, inserts in upcoming water sewer bills as presented with the ch- change on the backside of the rate description.
Promoted.
Promotion, is there a second?
Second.
Conversation, roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt, the night.
What's your eye?
Down night.
Wait, my eye. And moving into the special act town meeting warrant article, um, this came. Up as a discussion before being placed as a consideration for the warrant article. Um, on the special town meeting, um, it kind of has been festering around for a while. Um, I believe the past, uh, few years, the, the impetus was in feedback from. A, a number of boards and committee members and, uh, residents, um, when plan, there was planning board considerations with a, an elected official. Not showing up to a majority of meetings, um, and really hindering the business of, of the board. Um, and not representing the individuals who voted for, for the person, um. And then with the, the bylaws that just passed, the comprehensive bylaws that just passed, they're provided a mechanism for. Appointed board and committee members to be, um, removed from their appointed office. Um, and we know we have policies for staff to be removed from their positions, whether it's department heads or. Um, uh, staff, um, there is no opportunity for, um. Elected officials to be held to that same level of accountability and standards, um, so this was a conversation. That kind of has been on and off the, the burners back and forth, um, and it came forth. For the fall special, um, we wanted to have a conversation here at the board level. Um, before getting to the warrant article to see what the board's take was on it. Um, and, and have some conversation about it, um, I think the. The draft that's been provided to us has been, um, from legal, um, KP has worked with a number of communities. That have done, um, done recalls, it would be, this would be a special act, meaning that the, the. Um, town meeting vote would be to authorize the select board to petition the state legislature as a special act, it would have to go through the state legislature. Um, for legislature, legislative approval, um. Similar to years ago, I believe the Rutland Heights property was a special act, the, the taking of that and the. Disposition of how that would be managed, um, more recently, um, we did the special act a couple of years ago to formalize the select board. Going from three members to five members and the select board acting as, um, board of public works. Um, so it's a similar process, if you recall, those took, um. The better ha- part of a year to get through the, the legislature, um, so. That's the, the overall kind of piece of this, um. A number of communities in the, the state have recall, a number don't, it's. Um, similar to some of the other things, um, but it, there's an opportunity for. Town to do this if it's so wanted, um, I think if the, that we have draft language here from legal. Um, with some, you know, considerations, um, there are, this draft does provide. Uh, kind of specific grounds for which a recall could be initiated, um, not limited to, but to include, um. I know one of my, my big ongoing concerns is just. Um not limited to, but to include, um I know one of my my big ongoing concerns is just that it doesn't become at the political whim. Of um whomever, um and so that there really are kind of uh. Some level of standards for which they are, um and I believe that was some of the feedback also from the A G's office and the appointed board and committee. Um removal as well. Um some of the conversation, I believe, is kind of failure um under section two, part five. Failure of a member of a public body to attend more than however many meetings, especially now given the remote participation option. Um this used to be a bigger concern for many people who would go away for the winter or whatever, but now with remote participation. It's it can become more of a tool to disrupt the business of of the work for which they were elected. Um again, this is, it would be a petition, so I think one of the other considerations is um under sect- section three. Fifty or more registered voters of the town of Rutland may initiate the recall process, um that number, pretty much any of this can be amended or um. Um edited, um and it's for conversation. Again, this is kind of from, I believe, K P's kind of best. Best practices and what is oftentimes, I don't know how many times recalls have actually been. Fully performed from start to finish, oftentimes just the conversation about it or knowing that it exists. Um gives gives elected officials pause for consideration. Um I think one of the big ones, I don't know if any of us remember, I believe it was the mayor of Fall River was recalled and reelected on the same ballot. Um that's how those things work, so.
This one doesn't allow for it.
Right.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said, I read this, so, cause I've read multiple of them, well, I apologize, I've interrupted, but I read multiple of different types of recalls throughout the state. And some of them do, to what Leah's point said, you can be a candidate in a recall, so you could be reelected. This one does not allow that. The one that you have before you.
Um which is of concern to me, big concern. So if an individual really is quote innocent and can't run again, what does that say about our election system? That's a big concern to me. Because I have seen multiple places where individuals have run and the electorate has reelected them and we're saying. We think you don't hold up to the job, so we're taking it out of the hands of the electorate to make a decision. That concerns me big time. I mean, this whole, well, first off, are we making a decision to vote on this tonight? Uh or are we gonna work on this gradually? To getting it ready for the spring before um spring meeting and summer meeting, because there's a lot here. That will take us midnight, two in the morning to go through, as far as I'm concerned. So, cause it says here, the board will be taking an initial look, an initial look at the proposed special act. And then it says the intention, um trying to get it done by October seventeenth, so I'm confused. I don't know which is which here.
So this, I don't know where the October seventeenth is coming from, I will say that.
That's that's a memo on the back of the, that that's a memo here.
On the water sewer inserts. That the October seventeenth is for the um water sewer memo. I will say that the initial intent was that this would be on. The Fall Special Town Meeting warrant, um which would be, we would be discussing and placing.
Twenty fourth.
October twenty fourth, um. There can be the consideration that it's discuss, e- either that it's discussed and placed, that it's not placed, that it's just discussed. Um but I think that that was the hope was to just to get it um.
Talking about.
Talking about, and it's a placeholder currently for this Fall Special. Um again, knowing that it's a a long process through. Um and that it's been feedback that we as iterations of the board have heard. Um recently, given some of the situation that had happened.
Well, this is my first time seeing this or considering it, so. I I truly feel that this cannot be gone on the November ballot, cause there's too much here to go over. It it should, we we should discuss it, move it forward to future meetings and really get this right, cause. I made a list of things that I think are missing from this, and I don't wanna go into it tonight, but I think it's it's big.
Well, I mean, I would love to start the discussion tonight. I agree, it's not gonna go until midnight, but this is the, this is why we have these meetings is to. To hear the input from the rest of the board, um and not just um. Anyone, so if we don't have the input or the concerns to even understand where they fall. Um then it becomes a hindrance to doing business of of the board.
Excuse me? We're we're going through a legal process, and I guess, maybe I heard you wrong, that's a hindrance to getting this thing done is to doing it logically and. Investigating every piece of it, every section to make sure we get it right?
That's not what I said, I said.
Okay, then then please clarify, cause I I'm not sure what you said.
I said that unwillingness to even discuss and bring forward any concerns tonight, and I'm not saying that we're going through them all tonight. Becomes a hindrance to getting business done when we hear that there are concerns and there are um considerations that need to be addressed. But then we are never made aware of what those concerns or considerations are, that's what I said.
Well, my first consideration is watch the rush.
That's, I mean, that's up for conversation. I don't think, I mean, in in the sense of having the. This document, I think, is fine, but we had spent forever going through bylaws and public information sessions that people didn't come to. And so again, some of this was working, I believe, with legal from the legal perspective as. Um what is kind of best practice and it's not, again, just out of left field. So that's kind of the the, and it's taking into effect account the concerns that. We've heard over the past couple of years with what would what had have been happening on Planning Board. And then again, with the bylaw that just pass, the bylaws that were just passed and approved at the A G's office, having the opportunity to remove. Um appointed board and committee members from the business and knowing that staff, department heads and staff are all held to the same levels. Um of of accountability and ability to be removed. Um and that there's nothing at all for elected officials and that.
Well, I I do believe, uh. I do believe that this is needed. I think that it's probably been waiting a long time to do. But I'm just concerned that we are ru- yeah, we'll get, you wanna get section one or section two done tonight, we can talk about it. But I don't believe we're gonna get it all done tonight, and I don't wanna see it rush, so why does it have to go on the November election again? Why are we rushing it? Why does it have to go on November?
If I may, I don't, I don't think we're saying it has to. I think we wanna to bring, no, she didn't.
That's what Leah said.
No, please.
She said, we have a placeholder, we have a placeholder for it so that we can decide, do we want to, do we want to hold off? Do we, we wanted to get the discussion going here. And if we, if the board decides not to place it for the November warrant, then then that's what we decide. But at least the topic is here, we can start discussing it. I mean, we're also talking about charters. The charter is also a place that something like this could go. If and it's it's just introducing the topic, and if the board feels like we don't have enough time to review, which. I don't necessarily disagree with you, there's a lot in here and there's a lot that has to be thought about, and the timetable is pretty aggressive for something that. Um even me, I would be comfortable with for this, but I I would like to have the conversation and. Start talking about what are the concerns, what what do we like in here and what don't we like in here?
I agree, but. Why do we have to have a placeholder if we don't think we're gonna get this done? Unless you think we're gonna get this done. We're gonna push it through and get it on the November, on the November ballot, why?
If I can clarify, it's not about.
I can't get that through my mind, Leah, why? And I think the town deserves to know, cause this is very big. We are throwing something out here that says, we don't care what you voted for, because we see things you don't, and we want people deelected. You just can't do this in one night or in a couple of nights, you can't push it to the November election. I'm, I think the town deserves better than that.
There's a couple of things I wanna clarify. It's not an election, it's the special town meeting, this is a, would be a warrant article, it's not a ballot question, it's not anything, it's would be open for debate at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's first. Second of all, I understand the concern. It's a placeholder simply to say that if the board is amenable to it, which we're having this conversation. We will, we we will consider placing it. If the board's not amenable, if the board wants more time, we're amenable to that also. Like I said, I explained the rationale behind all of the leading up to it. As far as the timing, I'm not married to the timing. I I I. I don't want it to become a stall tactic, but to Jen's point, let's introduce it, let's get the conversation going. And if it's not a a an appropriate time, because the board as a an entirety doesn't feel that we have enough time. That's fine, it's not, we don't have to place the article, it's not, we haven't even talked about the warrant articles yet. This is one that came in and we. Figured we would have the conversation at the board level, because it is a lot, and it is a lot of information, and we wanted to make sure that if the board is going to place it, that the board feels comfortable placing it. If the board isn't going to place it, the board is either not willing to place it, period, or is willing to consider it in the spring, but wants more information, wants to work through it, wants to spend time on it. That's all.
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
But I think that to Leah's point, if you, if there's concerns, to start bringing up what those concerns are here, to start generating that conversation. That we can continue.
So which parts do we wanna talk about tonight? Section one, section two, section, how much do we wanna talk about tonight? Cause we're certainly not gonna talk about it all.
Well, let's start with section one.
I was gonna say, so let's start with section one, why are we.
And what's our time limit on this? Are we gonna have one? They have an audience here, we need to let them know too, that they're gonna sit through this.
So are you.
Three days, Harry, I don't know, what are you, let's talk about it, we don't know how much time it's gonna take. Two hours, is that good? Two hours, write that down, two hours we're gonna do it. Everyone satisfied?
So if there's, it sounds like there's strong consideration from the board. I'm amenable to not not placing it and not having the the placement continue. But I would like to continue the conversation, and so if there's.
I'd like to start the conversation.
Uh right, I was gonna say, I would like to start the conversation and and understand where, if if it's an outright refusal of it. Or if there's considerations or whatever, so. That's why we have these meetings and why we bring information forward.
Mm-hmm.
In mm, all the other boards that I've sat on, we would have been handed this at the town warrant wa- s- article signing meeting and.
That's not.
And done. There were many things.
That, you, that's not true, you should know that's not true.
There were many things to him that we were provided not not feedback from.
Every planning board article that's gone before this town has had informational meetings, has had some type of PowerPoint presentation. I can't speak for the other boards. But that's not a general statement.
This isn't, this isn't, this isn't planning board.
I get that, but you're making a general statement of, I was handed some in meeting, at town meeting.
I said oftentimes, there were warrant articles that came before us without any history and that we were just expected to place.
Yeah.
And so, planning board follows M G L. It was a big discussion that we had in our bylaw review committee or review for the bylaw committee bylaw. That they don't actually, for the general bylaws, they don't actually have, they are not actually required to hold public information sessions. This is not a bylaw, this is a special act, there's nothing that states that we have to provide the information.
We're talking transparency then, aren't we?
Uh you, we are, and that's, and but that's what we're doing right now, is h- opening the conversation, and I'm hearing.
I've had six hours to look this over, and you're gonna have a conversation about it? The public hasn't seen this, but for six hours? You gotta be kidding me, right? Six hours, this has been on, this has been posted in a packet.
This isn't, this isn't a public he- hearing, it's a public meeting, it's not a public information.
You had no stakeholders from the, um, uh, let's, let me just start thinking, who asked for this? That's that's the basic question, who asked for this to be put on?
Do you wanna, if you go back?
No, no, I asked who, I didn't, I'm.
It came through our office.
From who?
I asked for it to be considered.
Thanks.
Because of the feedback that we had gotten from planning board over the years, and then the consideration. That there was the bylaw that was just approved.
And what did K P say about the bylaw for uh elect- elected officials? What was their response to the agha- like ag- ad hoc. Committee about doing this as part of a bylaw?
It's not a bylaw.
What was it when they brought it up as a part of a bylaw? What was their response to that committee?
I don't.
That it shouldn't be a bylaw, I think, is what the.
Is that what they said? I I was told, I was told it wasn't supposed to be a bylaw.
Yeah.
I get the special act, I did the research, you guys are correct in that, but you haven't involved any stakeholders in this.
And I'm.
The stakeholders are the elected officials. If they don't, they didn't know about this until um Thursday, I I apologize, Tameka, I don't know when this was posted, was it Wednesday night or Thursday? That the agenda?
Thursday.
Thursday, so Thursday, which is typically forty eight hours before. All of a sudden, peop- elected officials can know about it, a- and and I find that.
And it's kind of funny, because oftentimes, we, a select board, get charged with di- with running the town and establishing these policies and procedures. And bylaws and everything, and then, uh like I said, I'm not married to this going on the fall, I'm not married to it. I wanted it for conversation. And it's here for conversation, but in one breath, we're held accountable for doing all of this work, and when it doesn't work, we got taken to task, the board. Not this iteration of the board, but the board got taken to task many, many times with the dysfunction that was planning board, many times.
And nothing came from board to help us out either, so let's just stop.
Because there was no willingness for the board to engage with legal or in executive session. And there was no opportunity to remove the individuals, individual who was not, would, that was hindering the business.
Yeah, may I just point out that the appointed boards and committees didn't get to have a say in the bylaw, whether or not they were removed, and neither does the staff.
They're not elected, big difference.
I I guess I s- I guess I struggle because as a, as a voter, as an elected official, but more so as a voter. If someone that I voted for is not doing the work that I voted them in for, then I want an avenue, especially especially for the longer terms.
Yeah, and and I don't, again, like I've said earlier, I'm not opposed to this, I just think. Of finding and getting the information forty eight hours, then this afternoon, actually getting a look at it. I couldn't even come up with questions, I was rushing through at lunchtime, trying to find something I could review to look at to have questions. That was my my issue. I I literally, I could stand behind this if I had time. And to 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 Harry's point, if I had a a month or so to sit down and come up with the questions, so I could come to the board and have good questions for you and make sure. You know, like we do on the planning board with zoning, make sure we get it right, just wanna get it right. I I I probably can stand behind this, cause I think you're right, there could be problems, but trying to rush through this.
I can't believe you just said that with a straight face.
I mean.
So if I'm hearing the sense from the board is that it's probably not gonna be a s- Fall Special Town Meeting warrant article item. But that it's not totally off the table, and that we will continue to have conversation about it for digestion, and I want, I I don't want. When it comes up at meetings to be like, I don't have enough time, I. We heard it again with the charter stuff tonight, we hear, I I hear it a lot, that we don't have enough time, and all I'm saying is that for the function of business. I understand we wanna be pro- professional and timely, um and thorough, but also there's time, there's there's a timeliness to government, and we've heard. I've also heard that everything moves too slow and government moves too slow, and so where is that balance as far as we get the information out and then. And then how much time do we need to digest?
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion? You know how we did the uh bylaws? We had certain sections set up at certain times, so every time we have a meeting, there are certain sections this board wants to discuss at a minimum. We wanna keep this thing going, we wanna move it forward, so let's get a schedule of how we're going to do it.
And I think if there's, I'm amenable to that, if there's also glaring glaringly concerns now or coming up. Bring them up, don't wait until it gets to section one or section. now or coming up, bring them up, don't wait until it gets to section one or section five or whatever.
And I just I think maybe to also assist the the board and other stakeholders um with this discussion, you know, perhaps um if board members have questions, they could send to our office and we could either compile them and provide um some answers that are maybe have already been answered type by town council or ask town council um or just to further guide the discussion, I would say from the board members and also members of the public.
I'd love to have time to do that honestly, I 'cause I I got questions on here.
Yeah. Yeah. Um
And I can do that, I can set up, that way I don't have to waste these guys' time, I
Yeah.
So again
So we can we can collate those and give that to the board if that assists with your discussion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep. So that's the that that, so we will hold that most likely from the warrant, I it sounds like that's the the
Would the board like to designate what sections they'd like to talk about at the October twenty eighth meeting?
Um I would like to look at the the agenda, but I would aim for sections one and two maybe, um but
Would I include three on that too? 'Cause three is pretty easy.
I I'm not I'm amenable to including three again, wanting to look at what the agenda looks like because I think we also wanna start looking at policy and everything also.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm fine with that. But again, if the board can then look at sections one, two and three and send concerns and considerations to our office um to to collate and if there's specific questions, but then we can come um with either have legal on or uh come with legal answers.
Mm-hmm.
Do we mean a motion to this? No.
No, this is just for discussion.
Okay.
It was just for discussion on the agenda, it's not any sort of of action requested.
Okay.
Um is there any other future agenda request items or additional business to come before the board tonight?
Um I'd like to add an agenda item to discuss Molton Road. Um to see, I I'd hate to see this situation happen again and to find out what we can do to solve the problem of Molton Road to give our citizens the opportunity to use that road. Is there a major issue where they can't, no matter what we do, it's legal or whatever? But I'd like to kind of get that on the discussion agenda for some point.
I so um I think it's a good future agenda topic. I just wanna um maybe if it's not on the next agenda, just because there's some ongoing work on that.
That's okay, I I just said I'd like to see it on an agenda, whether it's next one or not.
Similar to some other roads in town, obviously not great documentation for some stuff, um especially that road. So um I authorized the police chief to um solicit additional opinion from town council on specifically Molton Mill.
Could we include other roads on that as well, like you mentioned, or would that be too long of a session?
Um
I think mostly, if I may, I think most of the other roads are individual, like for these instances, I don't know for I don't know all the all of them.
Yeah. Why don't we go road by road, just because some of these roads have a lot of history, let's just say that.
Okay.
Can I can I clarify, is the is the confusion with it on if is it private? Or is the confusion because the town plows it?
There's this and it again, it's not the only one. There's history with this road that have to do with town meeting votes that did or didn't happen. Um litigation between civil parties, involvement with the town of Rutland, not proper documentation. Um so you know, also just to be totally candid, I mean, I think we have like four different opinions for if it's a town road or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um and furthermore, if it's a private road, um we're not restricted, just to be fully clear, we're not restricted from doing work on private roads. I think that's a misconception. Um however, general law does um guide municipalities for the kind of work that you do and any if for example, if there's any charges for um those services that are provided. So I think what we'd like to do is provide sort of a holistic opinion from town council um that takes into consideration all of that and then just a formal recommendation for the board. We have a couple of internal thoughts, but again, just wanna explore this before we recommend anything to the board.
I I know from past meetings that there are multiple private roads in town
Yeah.
that we plow. We don't agree to do it anymore for any new private roads, I believe was the decision.
Yeah.
But we essentially grandfathered in certain private roads for the plowing aspect, but nothing else.
Yeah.
So I I just I can understand why there might be some confusion if it this one falls into that case where it's a one of those grandfathered, the town agreed to plow it in the wintertime, but if there's no other maintenance, I just
Yeah.
I don't know if it's that or if it's something else, so
There's a lot there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of this just dates back to old roads and documentation. And you know, there's another one that was very controversial several years ago that we're also trying to explore, but um and then also general law has changed over the years for um private roads and services that are provided, so.
Would that fall under street acceptance? And going forward, for example?
For new roads
For a policy with that
Yeah. For new roads, yes, but if it's not ex- if it's not accepted and doesn't become a public way
Right.
we fall under general law. Um but it also may not be a bad idea for the town to and the board to consider a um a policy um for private roads because um well, we'll get into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The from I think twenty eighteen, the board at the time had declared essentially the list Jen that you're speaking about, that these are the only town private private ways, private roads that will continue to receive plowing services. Anything since subsequent to come after twenty eighteen essentially or whenever that list was designated
Mm-hmm.
um would would not be considered uh for if it was a private road to be considered for for town plowing.
Right.
And that that list I know is at I I would have been confident was active with DPW and not being um because periodically we'll have a developer come in and say, this board should accept this part of this road as a pr- that's private and not built to spec to be a a fallible road. Um is there are there any other future agenda request items? Then we have our upcoming board meetings, October twenty fourth, I think that's a Thursday, is our joint meeting with FinCom for looking at and setting the warrant. Um and October twenty eighth is our regular next regular scheduled meeting. Um in November, we have a November twelfth meeting, which is Tuesday, um that follows the Veterans Day holiday. And the twenty first is the special fall town meeting at Slenwood.
Um where's that meeting, where's the FinCom meeting gonna be in the uh thing room?
We're working that out right now.
No, we're still working that out, yeah.
Because there's a jazz concert down here.
Being in concert.
Um and so we can do it in here, but uh it would be loud still.
Yeah, yeah.
Um the other consideration I think is the wood studio, but the consideration there is it would be a small space for I think potentially twelve twelve board members between FinCom, I think is seven and like board is five plus staff that will attend. Um but
Sorry, I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um is if there's no other business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, Harry.
Second, man, I.
Paul, do you wanna adjourn?
Was uh
Do you wanna adjourn, Paul? Yes, mo- we have a motion to adjourn, you're up.
Yes.
Ledger high.
Gavin, I.
Whitman, I. We're adjourned eight fifty eight P M.